Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll. Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guerra will be absent today. Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vang.
I'm here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Mayor Protem Vang, would you please lead us in the landing acknowledgement? I'd be happy to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous peoples and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Puttwin and Winntu peoples, and the people of Walton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral land by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. I hear the sounds of children, and they are wonderful sounds. Welcome, welcome to all of you. Let me begin the meeting today by welcoming back my colleagues, the city staff, the members of the public. We've had our annual summer recess, which is good for everybody, especially the staff, for the council to go away as they worked hard. We all worked hard even over the recess, but always good to have a little time to think and reflect and to come back strong, which is what we do here today. So, welcome back, everybody. I'd like to begin the meeting here with a very sad but important presentation. And I do this with my colleague, Councilmember Laloie from District 2, one of the great North Sacramento leaders, Sister Patricia Rivers, Sister Pat, who passed away on the Fourth of July and left us too soon. I knew Sister Pat for many, many years and saw her in so many community settings. Her faith and her love for community was infectious. Sister Pat was not just another person who was active in the community. She was beautiful. Her spirit, her insistence, her enthusiasm for the community and for life was something that I know I will always remember. I remember seeing, I forget what the event was, Councilmember Laloie, because there've been a number of events back. One of the events that you hosted and Sister Pat was kind of a rule in the room, if you will. And so, we have a resolution for her, and I do think, you know, we don't read entire resolutions, but it's, I think, really appropriate here that we reflect on the life of this remarkable person. And I want to welcome the family, of course. I know we're all here. It must be some grandchildren, great-grand, great-grandchildren, many, many generations here. She'd be very proud of your great-grandma. I'm looking at the little ones sitting in the middle there. But Sister Pat was born in January of 1947. She, of course, was raised in Del Paso Heights and never left, and never left. Graduated from Grant Union High School in 1964, Pacer for life, and, as the resolution said, she had an extreme love and passion for the Del Paso Heights community and Grant High School. She married Ben Rivers Jr. at the Allen Chapel African Methodist Episcopal in Del Paso Heights, and in November 1976 gave birth to her only child, Chaniqua Rivers. And what a life and career. Started as an American River College and went to work at McClellan Air Force Base for over 30 years, fighting for equal rights as an equal employment opportunity advisor. And that wasn't enough, because 16 years into her tenure at McClellan, she became a licensed and ordained preacher. And was maybe best known, why she was known as Sister Pat, for being an evangelist speaker, a prayer team coordinator, and working with the California Southern Baptist Convention, founding His Glory Ministries, and in 2006 founding His Glory Church, in which she served as co-pastor, taught Sunday School, oversaw the various outreach ministries, and worked as a marriage counselor and, as it says, as an intercessor. Important to our city, she was a dedicated community activist, helped lead the fight against gun violence through the Sacramento Ceasefire Project, serving on the city of Sacramento's Gang Task Force from 2015 to 2016, was a founding member of the National Prayer Council, was the first Black chairwoman for the Sacramento Region Southern Baptist The resolution, no resolution can completely encompass the life of someone who was loved by so many. But I hope that this commemoration, signed by all members of the city council, we don't usually get unanimous votes, by the way. Signed by all members of the city council speaks to the love that this city had for Sister Pat, your loved one, and in many respects, our loved one as well. Councilmember Laloie?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. When I found out about the news, I really thought I lost a part of my heart. I had the pleasure of getting to know Sister Pat and Pastor Ben, and I would look forward to her calls to me. And I distinctly remember last year, she gave me a call because there was a lot of activities within our wonderful local news. She gave me a call. She always started her conversation with, "How's my favorite council member doing?" And so, I talked to her a little bit, and she said, "Just, I want you to remember one thing. Anytime that there's good deed that's happening, the devil will be there to knock it down." And then she also told me, "Don't you ever think about giving up." And then her favorite statement, "How may I pray for you?" And we actually prayed. So, every time I talked to Sister Pat, we ended up praying. When I found out about a certain medical condition that I have, she's the second person I called after my doctor. And she said, "Come on down, we need to talk." And I did, and we prayed. And I tell you something, Sister Pat, angel, saint, because no matter how much problem you had on your shoulders, you spend two minutes with her, you forget about all your problems. And then when she prayed for you, it was truly, it was truly a pray. It wasn't just, "Let's just pray and get on with our lives." So, Pastor Ben, you know, I love you, I love your family, you guys have a very special place in my heart for the rest of my life. But there's so many things that I wanted to say about Sister Pat that I thought maybe I might get emotional and lose control. And normally, I'm pretty good with talking to a point that sometimes my colleagues have to kick me and say, "Hey, cut it." But I just wrote a few things that I just wanted to say. We're here to honor her life, legacy of a woman, who is not only near and dear to my heart, she meant so much to District 2 community and the city of Sacramento. Sister Pat was a true champion for change. She was a champion for action. Her impact was felt in the District 2 community. She had such a presence. She was an inspiration, and in the years that I've had the opportunity to know her, I can truly say that she left an imprint on my life, and she will be missed dearly. Anytime I spoke to Sister Pat, she was always smiling. You could never tell how many problems she's dealing with, how many people she's talking to and hearing their problems, always smiling, and million-dollar energy. She was such a force that handled challenges with such a grace, and she always put the needs of others before herself. And this was every single time. Such a beautiful individual that she literally, if you had a problem, she'll drop everything and come to you without asking anything for return. And it's very hard to find that these days, so she's going to be missed. She was selfless. You know, there are numerous days in this past two weeks that all of a sudden I've heard with her angelic voice saying, "How may I pray for you?" God knows we all need some prayer today and tomorrow. You know, Sister Pat will be missed, but I can tell you, she will never, ever, ever be forgotten. So, I do want to just play, this is Sister Pat, this is her fighting the battle, but we had a community meeting, and this is the message that she left, if I may. It's very short.
And I just wanted to let my District 2 blessed community know that I appreciate being asked to be at the meeting on Monday, but I'm having some physical challenges and I won't be able to attend. But I did want to let my people know that we are a blessed community, and we need to quit talking and do some praying about what needs to happen in our community for our safety, gun violence, and everything.
Wow.
This is Sister Pat. So, thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Laloie, for that incredible tribute to Sister I got a chance to work with Sister Pat on the Gang Task Force. I asked her to serve, and she would not say no. As a matter of fact, she graciously said yes, and she served, and she never missed a meeting, and she prayed for us constantly, right? Prayed before the meeting, prayed after the meeting, prayed all through the week, and called to let you know that she was praying and that wanted you to pray with her, and we did that. So, I just wanted to let you know that her work was not in vain and that she was constantly raising new leaders. And because of the work that she did in raising new leaders, her work will go on forever. And the two new leaders that I know she put a lot in and invested in are sitting in the audience today. And one was the mayor today, sat in the mayor's chair, and the other one sat in my chair because they thought they wanted to be just like Rick. And I just want them to stand.
Not Daryl?
They sat in your chair. I just want them to stand so we can give them a big round of applause, because they are the next leaders of Sacramento. So, I had some personal words with each one of them earlier today as they sat in the seats, and I'll tell you exactly what I said to them, that Sister Pat will live in their hearts forever, and as long as they keep her in their hearts, she will never be forgotten, and the lessons that she taught all of us, all of us, will never be forgotten. So, Sister Pat.
Sister Pat, may I present this resolution on behalf of the city council to whoever is appropriate, all of you, if you're willing, and Councilmember Laloie, why don't you come down with me? Please, everybody come on down, and we'll take a picture, and we'll feed everybody who's here, your city leaders. I appreciate it. I'm Daryl Steinberg, the mayor. Why don't I present this to the great-grandchildren, is that okay? You guys won't listen, okay? And I will get, I will get, I will get in with you. You got one more? One more.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you again so much. Let us move to the business of the day and begin with the consent calendar. Are there any items that members would like to either speak to and/or vote on separately from the broader consent calendar? I've got Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, I'd like to pull item 14 for a brief comment and separate vote.
Separate vote, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
I'd like to briefly make comments on item 2 and item 7, and ask questions of staff on 27. It can be the normal vote, but I just have a couple of questions.
Same with the other items that you mentioned, or you want them voted on separately?
No, 2 and 7 I just want to make comments on.
Okay, and you have questions on which item? I'm sorry.
27.
27, very good. Okay. Councilmember Maple?
Yeah, I'd like to make comments on item 11 and 14, please.
All right, thank you. Let's, do we have significant public testimony on the consent calendar?
I have two speakers on item 7.
Let's go. Let's hear, let's hear from the public first.
Rashawn De Reed, and then Shiba Bijan. Rashawn? Okay, I don't see. Nope, okay. Zion Toddus on item 5.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Hey, my man. So, I wanted to speak on number 5 when it comes to business equity. So, for me, as a businessperson here in Sacramento for over 18 years in Cary Benzoles District, so what I believe is, as a businessperson, as a Black woman, and as a Black business owner, I see what is the struggle for especially our community. That is equity, 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 equity. So, what we're trying to really fight is, I know you give us $10,000, they're $20,000 or whatever, you know, as far as for the businesspeople to get going, but I believe we need a proper equity for Black businesses so we can actively drive here in Sacramento also support our community. So, what I believe is that through equity, through business and nonprofit, also entrepreneurship, Black equity, especially those people who's been doing the work every day, all day, the reason why our community is broke right now is Black community, because we only 2.4% of us in businesses, whereas our 65% are white community in businesses. So, I believe in that 2% is where we're breeding poverty. So, poverty brings community violence and police violence. So, the only way we can solve that problem, because you guys were not able to solve it, by bringing us people like businesspeople, entrepreneurship, and nonprofit, who are doing the work every day, we need a totally separate equity. So, we want to fight for a $100 million equity for Black businesses and nonprofit, as well as entrepreneurship. In that way, we can actually take our community in our hands and build them from ground up, especially here in Sacramento, because I believe the community in our Black community, the communities killing each other, also the police.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Killing our communities, so we need to stop that.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have two speakers online. The first is call-in user 1. Call-in user 1, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I wanted to speak on number 16, but I wanted to definitely pay my respects to Sister Pat. Before I do that, because Marysville Boulevard, she was up and down that street a lot, and she was a tremendous friend of our family. She was born in 1946, and that's when my parents moved here. She will be missed. That was a wonderful human being. Regarding 16, I just want to make sure that there was some money set aside to go down Marysville Boulevard. And I've been going down Marysville Boulevard all summer, and I'd like to see more pavement of Marysville Boulevard with 16. Anytime I hear Marysville Boulevard, I saw pavement go down Del Paso Boulevard, it looked beautiful, too. But it didn't come down Marysville, then it went past Marysville and went to Bell Avenue, which is Rayleigh Boulevard. They're all the same street, and then they went left on Bell. Everywhere the city did some work in District 2, except for Marysville Boulevard, is outstanding work. But we need to, if there was $5 million allotted for that, we need to see more improvement on Marysville Boulevard, all the way to I-80, from I-80 to Del Paso Boulevard. There's still some potholes there that were there when I was in high school. I can show you where they are. So, improve that and get the money out to Marysville Boulevard Street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Final speaker on the consent calendar is Keon Bliss.
Greetings, Sacramento City Council. I wanted to comment on item 14 related to the grant around ShotSpotter Flex technology. For those of you who may not remember, the Police Review Commission in 2022 put out in its recommendations, a recommendation to terminate the ShotSpotter Flex technology, given its deployment in three geographic areas raising significant community concerns over policing in Black and Hispanic neighborhoods, which now four separate studies over the last 20 years, most recently the search and seizure policy audit, have shown and confirmed egregious racial disparities for Black and Latinx residents. And by the, by the numbers, including listed here within this grant, as of December 2022, this policy, this contract has been amended and extended, like, you know, multiple times at a cost of up to $4 million, $4.3 million. And since inception, it's been frequently criticized by law enforcement experts and criminal justice researchers across the country for its poor, its poor analysis and metrics in such, in which several studies on ShotSpotter from places like Chicago have found that nearly 90% of police response to ShotSpotter alerts found no incidents involving a gun. Here in Sacramento, we are paying a significantly higher amount than what is actually listed in these documents. For example, the three-year projected cost for maintaining all ShotSpotter systems of $1.5 million doesn't actually take into account the projected average cost for SPD personnel that are assigned to it, which by our analysis from last year, found that SPD personnel we are paying up to $7.2 million, and the city can expect to pay no less than $8.7 million for the full use of ShotSpotter systems during the duration of the remaining contract. With that said, I want to remind you that, of our recommendation and encourage you to.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
All right, let's now begin with the members, and I'm going to begin with item 2. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. Item 2 is the approval of staffing for individual project agreement for our North Natomas Youth Workforce Development Program, which this is brand-new. In our area, we have eight affordable complexes that have brought in funding, of which the city is now, it's District 1 and District 3, that the city is now developing for youth, ages 13 to 18 cohorts, of going to bring in about 90 youth that will participate throughout the year, engaging in six weeks of stipend-based cohorts, of which they're going to learn about public communication, transportation, financial literacy, personal empowerment, civic engagement, job readiness, advocacy, and more, which I think is so needed among our youth and youth development. So, I just want to say thank you for the collaboration between SHRA and city staff in using these fees to really dig into our youth that are housed in these complexes, to establish the North Natomas Youth Workforce Development Program, and engage our youth so that it isn't gangs or other family that isn't influencing in a positive way, but we're giving them skills that will last a lifetime. So, I just want to call that out and say thank you for that partnership in creating that for our youth in North Natomas.
All right, thank you. You're next with item 7, please.
Awesome. I kind of want to call out item 7, and I'll ask questions on 27 just a bit, but they both deal with our unhoused neighbors. Item 7 is specifically dealing with our X Street Navigation Shelter. And a couple of things I want to call out, I really appreciate, it's a 24/7, it's probably one of our most difficult, hardest shelters there is. I know that it's hard, there's a lot of mental health and crime and difficulty there, but the VOA that runs it, I appreciate the data that they put in there, but it also goes into wanting to encourage getting back quickly, our audit on how we spend our money with our unhoused. This is staffing-intensive because it is 24/7, it is over $3 million a year, and this is just a bridge, because the continuation of this is reliant on HAP funding, wink, wink, Mayor, if you can make sure we get our HAP. Wink, wink, mayor, if you can make sure we get our HAP funding.
We're getting it, all right. And then some.
But, you know, one of the things to think about is over, since it started March 2021, there's been 681 guests, but only 234 have been housed in some sort of permanent, temporary, you know. And what do we, now I want to know, what are we getting from that? Why only 234? Why were we successful? Why weren't we successful? And that's the next data, set of data I hope we can start getting from our providers that we contract with. It is a much-needed shelter. I am supportive of that. But I think it deserves to be called out when we've got these things coming up, that we start increasing the expectations that our providers are providing a significant amount of data so that we, as a council, can look at it and understand what's working and what's not working.
Very good. We're going to have, of course, a full discussion on those issues you raised and other issues relating to homelessness, mental health, and substance abuse next week in an afternoon, lengthy afternoon session prior to National Night Out. All right, I've now moved to Councilmember Maple on item 11.
Thank you, mayor. I just really wanted to call this out. This is a huge opportunity for District 5. So the La Familia Counseling Center, they operate out of the Maple Neighborhood Center. This is smack dab in the middle of District 5, where we don't have any community centers. We don't really have very many places for members of the community to come together. And so La Familia serves as a vital, vital resource in that area and has done so for many years, but especially during the pandemic. And so applying for this grant, along with its many partners, is going to be a game changer. It's going to create an opportunity center in our area, and it's going to serve the residents of District 5 and the whole city of Sacramento. And so I just wanted to really thank staff, who I know are working hard on this. I want to thank La Familia and Rachel Rios. And I also want to thank former Councilmember Jasonier, who I know worked on this for a long, long time and put a lot of energy into it, so.
Well, thank you. I think, just want to add to that. We, through our ARPA funding, we were able to set aside millions of dollars to La Familia and to get started. And it has already proved to be incredible leverage because I think this is, this grant opportunity is perfect for that project for so many reasons. And I'm going to go to bat in every way possible, as I know you will, too, to try to get that. But it was, Councilmember Scheneer, you're right. I really felt very passionate about this one as well because this is an opportunity to collaborate and partner with one of the best community-based organizations in our city on a project that will be transformational. Not just for the Latino community, by the way, but for our entire community. Great. Thank you for calling that out. Councilmembers Valenzuela and Maple, comment on 14. And again, you've asked for a separate vote, but why don't we take the comment? Go ahead.
That's correct. And I want to thank our police commissioner for calling in to reiterate the point I was going to make. So now I just get to say what he said. But I know the police commission has expressed a lot of concerns about ShotSpotter. These are concerns that I share about the efficacy. And really, when I looked at this grant, it's pretty broad funding for crime prevention and crime response. And so I think this couple hundred thousand would do much better to go to a more proven intervention, like partnering, maybe more funding for our CBOs who are doing gun violence prevention work. And so that's why we voted no on this item today, unless the city manager is open to considering another source for that funding to be used for something a little bit more effective and timely. So, thank you.
I think I'm going to ask, after Councilmember Maple and after we get done with the other comments, ask Chief Lester, Police Department representative, to talk about this item, please.
I have some more concerns, so I'd be happy to hear from him.
Okay, why don't we do that? Well, as she's walking up, because I see her in the back, let me turn it over to Councilmember Kaplan on item 27, and then we will have completed the council comments.
Thank you, mayor. On the Capital Park Homeless Outreach Program. Hi, Nick. Come on up for a second. Everybody read it. And I already prefaced, Nick, that I was going to ask him a couple of questions. Specifically, can you explain to me how this ended up being a sole-source contract?
Yes, absolutely. Good afternoon, mayor and council. With this program in particular, we had a couple of things going on, one of which was we had a community-based organization that was already doing the work in the community and therefore was able to mobilize very quickly with this project. It's also, it's one-time funding. So we have $1 million with which we want to try to make sure we're really getting a return on our investment that's as high as it can be. And so being able to avoid a full-on startup and the additional administrative costs that would be associated with going out for, to say, an RFP, for example, really helped with this particular opportunity, understanding that there's no guarantee that the dollars would continue.
Perfect, because this is the $1 million we got from the state to help around Capital Park with the unhoused. And then what are we doing to make sure that the data we gather is solely related to how we spend the state's money? Because I know, and you know, the state, like if we've got good data, while this is one-time funding, my hope is we have really good data that we can go to our Assemblymember and Senator and potentially ask for additional assistance because we've got the data to show that this is something effective.
Absolutely. So any homeless services program that contracts with the city of Sacramento does have a requirement to utilize the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS. And that's where we get our client-level data and a whole lot, a very large breadth of data that we can use to not only gauge who it is that we're serving, but also to gauge health of programs and efficacy, and most importantly, outcomes. So with this program, not only will they be using HMIS, but they also will have a dedicated project within HMIS. So as the outreach teams are working under this contract, they'll be reporting their data specifically under that project. So at any given point, we could run reports to see how many people were served, what the ages, other demographic data is, and then, of course, most importantly, where they ended up after they received the services.
Perfect. And the last question. Is there anything included in this item that helps house individuals or families?
Absolutely. So one of the great things about the way that we were able to set up this program, again, it's all about trying to be as smart as we can be with the limited resources that we have available. So we also do have a commitment from our partners at CADA to provide 10 to 15 units of permanent housing associated with this program so that we can free up that space that we know is often full in our emergency shelters for households and families with children that are kind of in that last mile, and they're just looking for that last little bit to be able to find themselves a space and also provide a little bit of assistance to help with, you know, your first and last, your security deposit, things like that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. I appreciate it. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's hear from Chief Lester, please, on item 29, 14, excuse me.
14, yeah. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Maple, for asking some very important questions. Deputy Chief Olivera is here with me, and he has some stats. But I want to talk just really broadly on ShotSpotter. We have a very comprehensive violent crime reduction plan. If you remember, we came in front of this council about a year ago. We'll be coming back in front of council in a few months as we move forward with RFPs and additional funding for our CBOs. What we look at is a comprehensive strategy. It includes an evidence-based violence intervention program of prevention, intervention, interruption with our community-based organizations. We just actually had a fantastic meeting with them yesterday, going over what went well last year. Councilmember Jennings and the mayor spoke at that, where we have gaps, what we can do differently, and how we can support their work as a city, because I truly believe in it. But I also believe in technology, and I also believe in using every tool that we can to reduce gun violence in this city. If you look at where we have deployed the ShotSpotter technology, it overlaps very consistently with where you see extreme gun violence in the city. 45% of our gun crimes occurred in that seven square miles of the city. And I think it is very important to recognize that this technology is a tool that we need, that CBOs don't have. Even the police department can't solve these crimes without this type of technology. For example, we had a recent case, and we had seven shootings, six of which were identified via ShotSpotter. We did not note those cases were linked together until we collected those casings, entered them into the NIBIN system. And the NIBIN system, like, were able to tie all seven cases together. And that's an active case that we would not have solved without this technology and without the help of our federal partners. So the general fund right now covers about 2/3 of the cost. This JAG funding, you're right, it's very comprehensive. It can pay for a lot of things, but this is a critical need for our department. You also saw about a 30% reduction in the number of ShotSpotter activations last year. However, we are also starting to trend up this year. And these are, you know, there's a variety of reasons for that. So I'm happy to say that last year, we saw also a 30% reduction in the number of victims that were shot in this city. Still far too many, but we need to do everything we can to reduce those victims and get shooters off the streets and get guns out of the hands of people that should not have them. We, as part of the, just like, I'll finish just with this, and then I'll have Steve provide some stats. As part of the department reorganization, as part of our ongoing efforts for intelligence-based policing, we have eliminated the gang enforcement teams. We have transformed our strategy into violent crime reduction teams. And ShotSpotter officers have also been eliminated. That's going to give us the ability to put more people into patrol and use intelligence-based policing to address the epidemic of violent crime and gun violence in our city. With that, let me turn it over to Steve for a few stats, and then we can answer any questions.
Okay, chief, can I ask a question right now? Because what you're saying is, I just want to make sure I'm reading the staff report correctly because it sounds like you're using this funding to free up other general fund sources. So in the application to JAG, it says very clearly there are out-year projected budget shortfalls. And by using this money to fill a budget shortfall in ShotSpotter, we will free up other measure U general fund dollars for other potential uses. So it doesn't sound like there isn't money for ShotSpotter. It sounds like we're using this grant to use other general fund money somewhere else for something else. Is that a correct interpretation?
We're budgeted for just over $300,000 for the project every year, but the project's closer to $500,000. Natalie, can you come up and talk about the monetary piece of it?
Thank you, chief. She's right. We do get about, there is a MYOPA. We have an annual allocation of $315,000 per year, and that's funded now through the general fund. But our ShotSpotter costs between the three systems that we have implemented, so North SAC, Oak Park, and South SAC, those costs are like $510,000, give or take, a year. So this really is allowing us to pay for what the city's already signed on the dotted line to pay for these services. So we're not replacing.
So when you budgeted for this, then, were you expecting that you might need to use other non-obligated general fund money in the police budget to cover that cost?
Yes, and so that's, well, no. What we did with this application, instead of requesting for additional funds every year during budget development, we have this annual grant allocation, which isn't a lot of money. It's, you know, not quite $300,000. Instead of asking for augmentations every year to meet that funding gap, we're going to use this grant instead so that the city can then use that $300,000 that we would have asked for to do other things.
Okay, I must have missed, because it sounds very clearly in this grant application that essentially what we're saying is we're going to free up general fund money for something else within the department. So what you're saying is that, no.
The staff report is that the city has a structural deficit projected through FY '28. And so we don't have resources in the city to pay for that $195.
So every year, you're just planning on this JAG money to fill the gap? And if it doesn't come through, that's when you would need to reduce?
We would have to make some changes.
Yeah, but it wouldn't eliminate the ShotSpotter program. It would really reduce it down in scale, though, right? Because it doesn't sound like you would have no funding.
No, there would still be the $314 to support the two systems. This is support for the third.
Okay. And which system is that?
This is the one in South Sacramento.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to have a comment in a minute based on what I just heard, but let me turn it to Councilmember Maple.
If you want to finish, I know you hadn't.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Chief Olivera. Go ahead, I apologize.
Mayor and council. So I had prepared a report back during the budget process because I know there's some questions that came up on ShotSpotter and was submitted during the supplemental budget information. So that's what I'm kind of going off. But in the last four years, so the ShotSpotter alerts have led to the recovery over 2,089 expended casings, the seizure of 226 guns, 201 arrests, 366 National Integrated Ballistic Information Network leads, which is NIBIN that the chief was talking about. And NIBIN basically allows for the caption comparison of ballistic evidence to aid in solving and preventing violent crimes involving firearms. And between May of '22 and April of '23, when I did my stats, there was approximately 39,000 ShotSpotter detections, of which 833 were actually confirmed to be gunfire. And so if you don't, like, I could kind of explain how the ShotSpotter system. Okay. So generally speaking, the way it works is there are devices, listening devices placed throughout the city. We don't even know where they're at in these ShotSpotter zones that capture sounds of gunfire, or what appear to be gunfire. It's then, that information is then sent to a center where it's analyzed by computers, but also by humans who actually listen to the noises to try to detect whether it's fireworks, backfire in cars, that type of information, before they confirm that it's actually gunfire. And they send it out via computer. And then our officers get an alert of a ShotSpotter location. And our officers also, they either can get it on their cell phones, they have an app on their cell phones, their car computers, our comm center actually gets alerts, and you can actually press a play button and listen to the gunfire. So you can hear, our officers can hear if it's rapid gunfire, if it's automatic gunfire, multiple guns. They can actually hear it themselves to confirm that it's gunfire. And so that's how it works. So the center received, you know, for Sacramento during that year, 39,000 detections, but they actually only confirmed 833. And we only had three proved false positives, which mean our officers actually responded to three ShotSpotter calls that were dispatched and realized it was something else, whether it was fireworks or backfire. So only three out of those. So on average, we have, over the past four years, we averaged about 40 arrests off ShotSpotter calls. And those are directly tied. So those are when our officers respond to a ShotSpotter detection call, and they contact somebody and they find a gun, or it leads them to a scene of a shooting. And so those are, but there's a lot of information that they gather off those that lead down the road to different investigations, and those aren't even tracked. It's very hard to connect to how many arrests we make that are somehow in one way connected to ShotSpotter. 80% of the ShotSpotter calls we respond on, we have no connected call from a citizen. So we never would have got those calls. And actually, in the report I provided, there's about eight examples where we actually had confirmed victims that were shot that we never received a call. And some of them were, our officers actually located the victims first before any medical aid arrived on the scene. And on average, over the last four years, we've recovered about 40 guns on average per year. And again, we have about 800 activations a year on average, so.
Okay. So I want to go back to the budget question for a moment because I think Councilmember Valenzuela was questioning, at least clarified some things. I just want to see if I heard it right. That the police department would be advocating for general fund dollars for the South Area ShotSpotter, but for the grant, correct?
That is correct.
And because we got the grant, we now free up, would you say, $300,000 for some other city purpose, not necessarily a police department purpose, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If we get the grant. But that's, this is not to approve or to continue the South Area ShotSpotter. It's to apply for the grant.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Let us then vote. Oh, you had a follow-up. Go, go.
I didn't get a chance. I was waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to say, first of all, thank you for very quickly getting the information about this. I know I had some questions and concerns during the budget process related to this just because we've had, you know, not only residents of District 5 and other constituents reach out with concerns. There's been a national conversation. I know that was brought up by one of the callers. And so I know it seems there's at least one Sacramento Police Review Commission recommendation that is to cancel this contract. Have you spoken with the commission at all about that and figured, determined if there's a path forward that, you know, you both can agree upon? Or do you think it's just a, you know, a challenge that you're not going to be able to overcome?
Well, with Commissioner Bliss calling in, that was the first time I had heard that information. But I would have to check with Assistant City Manager Laura and then our staff to see if there's been specific questions. They do have a series of recommendations for it. But in this case, if it is a question of abolishing the program or moving forward, I am staunchly in favor of keeping the technology. And I'll tell you, if I sound passionate about it, I am. We use every tool we can to try and protect people in the city and anything we can, like I said, to get guns off the streets and prevent further gun violence. I think this is an incredible tool for doing it, and I'm a strong advocate of it.
Can I speak to the overpolicing part of it, the question? So, and I've heard that complaint before in the past. But I'll tell you, I was a lieutenant watch commander when we started the ShotSpotter system up in our north area. And I was skeptical at first. And it was amazing how accurate the information was and the location provided. It typically took us right to the location where we would find, you know, shell casings or a victim or whatever it may be. In my belief, when we're getting ShotSpotter activations and our officers can hear that gunfire, they're responding a lot more safely and more of a tactical approach, a safer approach, and going into the neighborhoods. Versus when we get that phone call from a community member that just hears gunshots in the area, and they don't have a specific area to go to, they're all over the neighborhood looking for something. ShotSpotter takes us directly to the location. If we find people that are in the area, they still have to get other information to be able to contact or detain, they can contact anybody, but to detain. able to contact or detain, they can contact anybody, but to detain somebody, they have to have other articulable information to be able to detain them, not just based off the ShotSpotter information. And many times, our officers will share that information with people they contact and say, hey, we're here because we had a ShotSpotter activation. They'll let them hear it on their phone, and it kind of puts people at ease, and they know the officers are there for an actual purpose and not just there to harass them as sometimes the complaints are. So I think it actually helps us, directs us to where crime is occurring versus just a general area looking for somebody walking in the area where gunshots were heard.
Yeah, that's really helpful. And one thing that I was unaware of until I read through the data that was sent was the number of people that were shot and, you know, were able to survive as a result. There wouldn't have been a police, there wouldn't have been a phone call from a resident. So that was really compelling to me. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have Councilmember Laloie on this item?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Going back to what we have heard regarding the ShotSpotters, as technology advances, I'm hoping so does our department, simply because it makes life easier on the officers and also on the community. And that's what we need to take a look at. I think one of the callers used Chicago as, hey, there's this stat coming from that city. It's really sad that we're utilizing Chicago as an example, because if you're looking at the news, you can see the amount of crime and murder, how he has elevated in the past year or so. So maybe they need to look at us, and maybe they should look at the technologies that we want to invest our money into. We're saving lives and making a community safe. The ShotSpotters, I know I have it in my district, I don't know where they're at, but I know that it has proven to be very effective in the past with some of the activity that has taken place. So again, if we're going to use cities as a stat or data, let's utilize cities that are actually are minimizing crime and not cities that's, you know, War World III as we're sitting here. I think last week, something like 20 or 30, 22 individuals got shot in one day, in one day in Chicago. So thank you very much for that presentation. As much technology that we can use, that's the way of the future, and I completely support that. Thank you.
Okay, we've got Councilmember Valenzuela, the last word.
Yeah, just to wrap it up, because I was able to find some of the Police Review Commission's data and information that they've collected on this, and I regret that the department hasn't seen it. You know, by their math, this costs $22,818 per firearm seized and $26,359 per arrest, which does not include the time, any salaries associated with officers who need to go out and follow up with ShotSpotter. And so all I'm saying, when we talk a lot on this dais about efficacy and dollars and how we're spending our dollars for maximum impact, that is the question, is whether or not paying $26,000 per arrest is worth the impact versus building more trust in the community so that they do call for help versus investing in those CBOs to make that happen. So I just wanted to round that out because I was able to find that, and I do hope that you can follow up with the police commission on these concerns. Because I think they're bringing up some important points that we should be able to answer to when it comes to how we use every single dollar to reduce as much gun violence as we possibly can. Thank you.
All right. So let us.
I'd like to make a comment regarding that. You know, I appreciate that data. But to put an amount or a dollar amount on a life, I don't know if $50,000 is the going rate these days or not. To me, if you can seize a gun today, and it's going to cost us $50,000, thank you so much. Because that gun has so many bullets. And I'm not here sitting down trying to create a value for a human being's life, whether it's 50,000 or 100,000. If we can take guns off the street, more power to you. Let's do it, because that's how we can make our city safe and our communities safer. Thank you.
Let us take a motion on the consent calendar with the exception of Item 14, which we'll take a separate motion. We do have two callers who should have been called upon earlier, yes?
Thank you. I have two more speakers in chambers, Dr. Truth Bay and Johnny Smith. Dr. Truth Bay or Johnny Smith?
I'm Johnny.
Mr. Smith is back here. Coming up. Okay.
And is Dr. Truth Bay here? No? Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Hi, my name is Johnny Smith, and I'm here because I have a nonprofit organization that's called Uncle Johnny's Transitional Home. I'm a retired substance abuse counselor, and I've done most of my work in Los Angeles County and Kern County. I've worked with inmates, gang bangers, you know, guys that belong to the, you know, low-riding Nazis, ABs, Aryan Brotherhood, all those type of people I've helped get clean, you know, because I've been in their lifestyle. Now I live here in Sacramento, and I'm a little older now, so I needed to keep moving. And as I drive around here in Sacramento and I see things, people standing on the corner with signs begging for food, begging for money, you know, and I pull over and I stop and I talk to them. I go to the homeless camps, and I talk to the people. I go inside their tents, you know, and tell them who I am and everything. And I've been where you've been, man. You want to get right, you know? So anyway, I got the organization going, but I don't have the funding. I do not have the funding, and I can't get it up. You know, I've been here six years. I've been in Sacramento six years, and I've been, and Uncle Johnny's Transitional Home been existing since 2001. I'm here to ask for help, you know, to get this off the ground. I know how to run a residential treatment program, and mine would be transitional. I like to catch the guys coming out of the county jail or the prisons, to catch them before they get out there in society. Because as I worked here for a minute as a counselor, I ran into some guys that were AB 109s, and I was working at the probation department as a counselor. These guys were homeless. I had to change my curriculum around to talk to them about how to stay free without committing a crime. Because they would get violated if they didn't come to the classes.
Your comments, your time is complete.
My time's complete?
Sir, I'd be happy to have either myself or one of my team talk to you offline. The city does not fund residential treatment in the way that you described, but maybe we can help you. At least talk to you about what you've tried in terms of grants, in terms of other funding, and see if we, see if we might be of help to you, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that.
You sound like you're trying to do good work.
That's all I need is a little help.
I'll make sure that we get your number, and I'll make sure my team calls you.
Yes, sir. Thank you a lot.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And Dr. Truth Bay is on Item 5. That's our final speaker.
Okay.
Thank you. It's actually 5 and 7, but I'll just elaborate on 5. Good evening. I want to speak about business equity. As before, I see a lot of businesses, especially black-owned businesses, that are being harassed, that are so-called getting inspections unnecessarily, that are being shut down. We focus on our youth, it's not only just our black youth, but youth in general. We don't have safe spaces for them to go to. A lot of them are musicians, actors, dancers. There's no places that people don't get upset and then try to shut them down, and these kids in the street. Then we try to get some funding to help reduce violence and stuff. We just need these spaces, these empty buildings that are sitting there collecting dust. We have a youth council, Mr. Chan, that we like to create. We need cooperation, though. We don't need roadblocks or redlining or any more red tape. These kids, if we really care about the kids, the programs are here. You have IM SAC Foundation, which is one of the most known organizations focusing on the youth and mental health. So a lot of the community Sacramento businesses are requesting for the red tape to be cut down. I don't know if I can speak to this on this agenda or as non-agenda items, but there's an issue with the fire inspections with the Karen Carpenter. Again, a lot of certain businesses are being over-inspected, that are being threatened, that are being harassed by the fire department. And I would like for, especially Ms. Katie Valenzuela, this is in District 4 downtown LA, for you to look into this. If Karen Carpenter cannot be fair and impartial and stop harassing certain people, this is a fire department inspection. This is something that should be taken seriously. It should not be abused and to threaten with certain businesses. Lastly, housing navigation homelessness, there are solutions. As we heard with Johnny's Transitional Housing, there are also lived experience organizations that would like to solve the problem. But we need the grant equity, and like I said, the red tape to cease, and this is. So thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
My chief of staff, Dr. Is, is going to come in the room here in the back, and he'd love to talk to you to understand which businesses are having problems and how we can help.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's take a motion on the consent calendar with the exception of Item 14, please. Moved by Councilmember Jennings, seconded by Councilmember Kaplan. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Item 14 is there a motion? Moved and seconded, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Laloie, Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
No.
Councilmember Maple.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Guerra is absent. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vang.
No.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, that motion passes. That's the consent calendar. Thank you very much. All right, let's now move to the public hearings. We've got three public hearings, and let's take them one by one before we get to the housing workshop and the board and commission audit. Who's presenting on Item 29 and Item 30?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, council members. My name is Fadi Jaja. I'm the Building Services Manager with the Department of Utility. I would like to read into record that the total amount to be levied as special assessment as indicated in the staff report has been reduced as a result of payment received. The total delinquency amount to be levied as a special assessment is $6,487,575.11. Exhibit A in the staff report has been revised to reflect these changes, and a copy is on file within the city clerk's office. I respectfully request the mayor and council to open and close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
Thank you so much. Public testimony?
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Councilmember Valenzuela? Were you on this one? Yes.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for the presentation and just note how much I appreciate Department of Utilities' work in letting customers know about resources available, including reduced rates and other bill-paying services, so that folks, when they unfortunately end up in this situation, it's after, you know, multiple touches with your department, trying to help them figure out how to manage those bills. So I just want to recognize that, because I know someone might see, oh, no delinquent charges, what's going on, and not understand or appreciate. And I'm really proud that this council has kept funding the Sacramento Utility Rate Assistance Program. That was a big discussion in our last budget, because we recognize households are still having problems. So just want to appreciate the multiple attempts you make before you take this step and open and close the public hearing and move the item forward. Thank you.
Teamwork, thank you.
Teamwork, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. You kind of took my points of, I appreciate how much you go through, so that when this comes, we know several attempts have been made. But I want to channel just a little bit of my colleague, Councilmember Guerra, who is not here, who has brought up before of this council looking at delinquency charges, special assessments, and how we go about it, and making sure that, you know, I think how you guys do it holds it up to a certain standard. But how do we also help individuals who don't have that ability? And how does it all come into play? Because this is, some of utilities are kind of essential. And I think it's also a way that indicates, when we look at these individuals, if it's not in a state, which generally means somebody has passed away, you know, how could we potentially help these individuals? Because this might be at the point of where they might end up unhoused because of being unable to pay bills. So I just wanted to channel a little bit of my council member, because I know how he speaks up on these, but also say thank you for your attempts to collect and let everybody know that there are options that they have. And I will second that.
Okay, we've got a motion to open and close the hearing and approve the item. A second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you again very, very.
Thank you very much.
Very important.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. My name is Jose Quintanilla, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. P-21009 Robles Estates subdivision is a request to subdivide one parcel measuring 19.58 acres into 177 residential lots, with additional lots for a public park, detention basin, private driveways, and other open spaces. This project requires the following entitlements. A general plan amendment to change the land use designation from suburban neighborhood low density to suburban neighborhood medium density for purposes of increasing density. A rezone from agricultural to multi-unit dwelling R2A zone. A tentative subdivision map to create the new parcels. Sci-Plan and Design Review for review of the map with deviations to lot standards and minimum required public street frontage, and for the construction of the 177 single-unit dwellings. There's also a tree permit entitlement to remove 40 city street trees and one private protected tree. This project is before the council this afternoon, as rezones and general plan amendments require approval from the council. The Planning and Design Commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval to the council at the May 25, 2023 meeting. Planning staff is supportive of the requested entitlements, because the project creates more affordable housing options through efficiency and density by nature of the smaller lot sizes. There are several connections to the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail, which is located immediately east of the project site, provided within the subdivision. There's a city public park provided at the corner of Rio Linda and Street B. And the project improves infrastructure in the area with new drainage facilities, water and sewer connections, as well as a new dual-lane roundabout on Rio Linda Boulevard. In agreement with the applicant, staff has added the following conditions of approval to the project as supplemental material. The applicant will retain the existing black willow tree located in the future public park. Given the proximity of the privately-owned Rio Linda Airport, the developer will be required to disclose the proximity of the airport prominently displaying this notice in the sales office, as well as recorded on property deeds. Staff would like to note for the record that condition E18 under the Sci-Plan and Design Review entitlement, which requires this notice, will also be included in the tentative map entitlement conditions as well. And those conditions will be reflected in the final resolution. Staff recommends approval of the project as condition, as the project is consistent with many goals and policies of the 2035 general plan. Specifically, the project developed an underutilized site with a denser housing product, provides additional housing options. It expands upon infrastructure much needed in the area and provides a layout that will be seamless with existing neighborhoods. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are here. Should you have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there public testimony?
Mayor, I have no public comments on this item.
Okay. Is there a motion, Councilmember Laloie? Or Councilmember Kaplan? This is Councilmember Kaplan's district now, sorry. Redistricting.
Redistricting, it started under Councilmember Laloie, is now in my district. And I just want to make a couple of comments, because I do know that the Robles Neighborhood Association has expressed some concerns and opposition to this. But it is the balance of, housing is a necessity in this city, and this is just one of many factors in addressing our unhoused. This plan was brought to the community in April 2021. The community met with the developer. I've met with the developer. I requested for a delay, so I can continue to meet with the community. And I also met with the Rio Linda Airport, which is actually situated in the county. The city and the developer did the right thing, and they did get approval from SECOG on regards to the Rio Linda Airport and the comprehensive land use plan, and it is consistent. I appreciate staff working with me to make sure that the disclosure is very highly brightly noticed, because this is in the takeoff zone area. But I met with the airport, and they are understanding of all of this and where their flight path is. Because if you look at where they take off, it is over a significant portion of the community that is already built and existed there. I can't say that I've gotten in my tenure many complaints about noise. I don't know whether you got some when you were there. I understand that the school is concerned. While this is not adjacent to the school, it is just south. One of the things that I think is very helpful is on the expansion with Rio Linda. The road is creating a roundabout, which is going to slow individuals but not backlog the community and to keep the flow. I would really hope that we could save more trees. I tried to see if we could do that. We did get one saved in the park. But it is the expansion of Rio Linda that was kind of already planned, unfortunately. But those trees will be replanted with more. And none of the trees that are along the east side that connect to the bike trail are going to be removed. If anything, when the development gets approved, more trees will be planted, and there are going to be several different access roads or access pathways for the community to be able to get on the bike path, as well as children that live there be able to walk to school. It is creating, so it won't necessarily increase traffic. I get that there is a balance. No growth is not the answer. This is only 177 units. I do know that the community would like to see less density, but the developer has done everything right. They have worked with it. All of the amendments that are being requested are consistent. And we in the city of Sacramento need to meet our housing goals, because there are consequences if we don't. Plus, this brings in an affordable option of new housing in a community that does need some growth, because it may spur some commercial development on the empty land that is out there that needs to grow. So for that reason, I'd like to open and close the hearing and move this project forward.
Second, my councilmember Maple. There's no public testimony. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you very much, councilmember Kaplan and staff. Item 31.
Good afternoon, mayor and city councilmembers. My name is Whitney Hinton, program manager and development finance and portfolio management. Staff is requesting approval to execute a disposition and development agreement and execute a conditional loan commitment for Donner Field Apartments in the amount of $8,540, which is made up of home, HAPWA, seller carryback, and city general funds. In 1985, SHRA received the title to the one-acre property. In August of 2020, SHRA issued a request for proposal seeking a developer to construct and manage new affordable housing. Eden Housing was selected to build senior apartments. This is a new construction senior project ages 55 and up, with two three-story buildings located at 4501 Ninth Avenue that will consist of 67 one- and two-bedroom units, all below 50% area median income. Seventeen of the units are reserved for project-based voucher residents and for people who are experiencing homelessness and who are in need of mental health services. There will be one-story, there will be a one-story building for community room. Amenities will include computer room, shared kitchen space, barbecue area, bocce ball court, and community garden. The developer is Eden Housing, Inc., who has developed and acquired over 11,400 units, serving more than 24,000 low-income residents since 1968. This will be Eden's first project in Sacramento. Eden Housing Management will provide property management services. Eden Housing has over 35 years of experience in affordable housing management. They currently manage 138 properties and 138 properties with more than 9,000 units. Resident services will also be provided by Eden Housing, where they will provide 15 hours of resident services for the residents. Classes will include, but not limited to, nutrition and health classes, bingo and gardening, and counseling assistance. Supportive services will be provided by Sacramento County Department of Health Services, and they will provide one full-time case manager, who will be responsible for the mental health service, mental health supportive services, and the coordination of the other supportive services needed for the 17 MHSA residents. Federal prevailing wages will be paid on this project. In closing, this project will be applying in August for low-income housing tax credits. If awarded, this project will have an anticipated construction start early spring. Therefore, staff is recommending, is recommending funding approvals and execution of disposition agreement for the land with Eden Housing. Staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Presentation, I do have, do I have public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I have no speakers on this item.
Then I have councilmember Maple. Go, go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just really want to uplift the fact that this has been a long time coming. So the land, the land first received in 1985. So it's really great to see a project like this in District 5. This is a parcel of land that I literally ride by on my bike almost every day. I have a friend who lives right across the street. And it's going to be such a good use of that, of that land and property, especially for senior housing and those 17 units for MHSA Full Service Partnerships, Mayor. That's a, it's a huge win for us and the community. And so I would like to open and close the public hearing.
And move the item?
And move, yes. That as well, thank you.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Something to really celebrate, by the way. I'm now speaking after the fact. But really, congratulations. It's, this is, this is housing services, the combination, our vision, what we talk about, in action. Good job. Thank you. Okay. All right, well, speaking of housing, we now get to item 32, which I suppose Madam Clerk is combined with item 34, right? I mean, it's, we don't have to hear this, we're not hearing this twice.
Item 34 is just informational.
Okay.
So we're just hearing item 32 right now.
We're just hearing item 32. So let's get to the housing workshop. And the context for this hearing, I think, is really, really important as we get into the, to the details. Go ahead, please, Christine. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Christine Weichert with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. So over the past several years, the city and county of Sacramento had made significant investments to increase shelter service and supportive housing opportunities for those experiencing homelessness. But according to the 2022 Point-in-Time Homeless Count, there were 2,278 unhoused individuals in the county. In desire to improve coordination, the city and county entered into a five-year partnership agreement to coordinate homeless-related activities. The partnership agreement requires the city and the county to work together to aggressively meet the permanent supportive housing needs and develop an affordable housing plan. The Affordable Housing Plan follows strategies outlined in the Local Homeless Action Plan, or LHAP, to increase permanent housing and rehousing opportunities. SHRA has taken the lead in preparing the plan, has engaged the service's environmental science associates to assist. ESA has extensive community and urban planning experience and very knowledgeable of housing. Today, we're at both the Board of Supervisors this morning and the city council to gather input on the Affordable Housing Plan before its release in mid-August. We anticipate bringing the plan back to the board and council for discussion and approval in September. I'll now turn the presentation over to Shannon Wages from ESA, who will walk you through the plan's development to date. And in the end of the presentation, we are open to any thoughts and questions you may have. So Shannon?
Thank you, Christine. And members of the council, my name is Shannon Wages. I'm with Environmental Science Associates. And today, I'm happy to be providing an overview of the city and county Affordable Housing Plan. So as Christine mentioned, the city-county partnership agreement established a roadmap for city-and-county collaboration on activities that focus on addressing the crisis of homelessness in the county. The city and county both agreed to aggressively meet the permanent supportive and affordable housing needs identified in the Local Homeless Action Plan, or LHAP, by finalizing an Affordable Housing Plan. The Affordable Housing Plan will take strategies from the LHAP a step further by identifying specific activities or actions to accomplish them. Stakeholders working on this plan include the city and county of Sacramento, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, or SHRA, and Sacramento Steps Forward. So per guidance from the LHAP, the Affordable Housing Plan focuses specifically on two things. One, permanent supportive housing production. And two, rehousing strategies to be carried out by the city, county, SHRA, and Sacramento Steps Forward. Staff from these partnering organizations met on numerous occasions over the past few months in order to collaborate in developing the plan. In addition to these planning meetings, outreach activities were conducted with a number of stakeholders to solicit feedback on the plan. In June, we met with several community group stakeholders, including Sacramento Act, or area congregations together, the Sacramento Housing Alliance, the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness, the City of Sacramento Housing Policy Working Group, the Continuum of Care Board, and the Sacramento Steps Forward Persons with Lived Experience Group, and the SHRA Commission. The meetings here today with the Board of Supervisors previously and with you today, city council, are final steps in the outreach process. We'll then be releasing a draft, as Christine said, in August, prior to the public hearings in the fall. And stakeholder input, just to summarize, included requests for the following items to be included in the plan. So they wanted to see goals, objectives, strategies, analysis of costs and funding sources, timelines and recommendations. And this feedback was considered and incorporated into the plan. So now I'm going to talk, to walk through the core elements of the Affordable Housing Plan, which is currently in progress, starting with permanent supportive housing activities. Okay. So the Affordable Housing Plan establishes two priorities, the first being to increase permanent supportive housing, or PSH production. PSH is defined in the plan as permanent subsidized rental housing with supportive services for individuals and families who are homeless. And this slide demonstrates current activities supporting production of permanent supportive housing, including both the city and county were designated by the state as pro-housing jurisdictions. Both have eliminated zoning barriers to PSH development. Both jurisdictions reduced fees for affordable housing. An assessment on vacant property is being explored by the city. And SHRA currently prioritizes funding and housing choice vouchers for PSH developments. The city and county, SHRA and Sacramento Steps Forward, met on multiple occasions and worked through multiple drafts to identify new strategies for inclusion in the Affordable Housing Plan. A few of the new strategies to increase PSH production include prioritizing PSH projects when any new funding sources come to the city, county, or SHRA; exploring local ballot or bond initiatives, as well as state legislation and federal funding to create new funding sources; and using publicly-owned vacant land for PSH whenever possible. And I want to mention that activities in the Affordable Housing Plan go into a great number, a great detail, and are organized by gap or need, one of which is to increase funding and development of PSH. So that's what these activities on this slide point to. Other strategies in the plan address the need for increased developer support and capacity, and the need to innovate and support new types of PSH development. The second priority to be established in the Affordable Housing Plan is to increase rehousing capacity. Rehousing is defined as the provision of time-limited financial assistance, housing search and placement, landlord engagement, and case management for individuals and families who are homeless. Actions already underway include 6,100 individuals are currently being provided rehousing assistance annually through a number of organizations that provide varied services, including housing search and placement, landlord engagement, financial assistance, case management, and stabilization services. The county has also allocated $10 million to their Landlord Engagement and Assistance Program, or LEAP, to address gaps in services offered by current providers. In the same manner that the permanent supportive housing strategies were developed, the collaborating partners held meetings and worked to identify new rehousing strategies. And these new strategies are listed here and include providing ongoing funding for the LEAP program, connecting rehousing providers with a coordinated access system, recruiting and training new rehousing providers, and designing and piloting a shared housing program. So again, following these workshops, a draft Affordable Housing Plan will be released, and we intend to bring that back to the board and city council for approval in September. And that concludes my presentation, and we are open to your thoughts and questions regarding the plan. We have members from the city, county, Sacramento Steps Forward, and SHRA here to answer questions.
Thank you so much. I know I have a number of questions. We're going to wait till after the public testimony. Not so much about your presentation, but really, more than anything, maybe a tee-up for next Tuesday's conversation about Safe Ground and how it fits into our housing plan and the comprehensive partnership agreement between the city and the county. But I'll hold off until we hear from the public. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 10 speakers. First is Jonathan Shaw, Jay Eldon, Brooke, then Nikki.
Good afternoon, city council. Mayor, how you doing?
Good, how are you, sir?
Don't remember me, do you? Well, I'm not going to talk unless you put your phone down. Well, I have to say it's very important. That's nice. You can listen to me. You've been listening for most of the time, but, you know, I'm born and raised in Sacramento. I went to John F. Kennedy High School. I'm homeless. I can admit I don't have to be. But I'm homeless. And homelessness in Sacramento could be eradicated. I don't think you care enough. Ms. Maple said something about a program that was going on since 1985, and you called it your baby? 1985. Tell you what. I know a lot of people. Pastors, lawyers, doctors, a lot of friends. You gave me a piece of land, and I don't even need your money. And I bet you, comparable to whatever you gave me, I could make a whole bunch of people not homeless. You have to care. Really care. I cleaned up a lot of your streets. Your city streets. Because your workers don't want to. I just wish you'd care. And also wish that the next time somebody like me talks, tell the police department to be here. Because until they can police themselves-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
-it's not anymore Stefan Clark's.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jay Eldon, then Brooke. So Jay, Brooke, Nikki, then T, then Mark Maron.
So this Wednesday was a sweep at C and 28th Street. And this Thursday, there'll be a sweep at C and 22nd Street. They were tagged today. These are things that I heard from people.
Yeah, Miller Park, the tents are all sitting on black asphalt concrete, extremely hot. There's no shade. On the days it was 108 outside, it had to have been at least 115 in there. But, you know, I could have dealt with the rules and regulations just fine if it was a place that I could actually breathe in. Really and truly, it was so hot.
They, like, were pressuring us to go to Miller Park. And then when we changed our minds, they, you know, well, you need to be gone from here by 9:00 AM tomorrow, or we're going to throw all of your stuff away, basically. They convinced pretty much every single person around us to go. A lot of them almost immediately left, because it was so hot. It's unbearable. They've made it so they've made it almost impossible for us to be homeless in Sacramento, but they haven't given us another option.
Everybody's having a mini meltdown. It's a mental health day.
Yeah.
You know?
During a sweep, right?
During the sweeps, yeah. It's not that they're on something, it's that they're devastated. You know, a friend of ours, in the morning, before everything really started to crack off, she was normal as can be. By halfway through, she was walking around like a complete zombie, you know, totally flustered. We couldn't even hear or understand what she was saying as she was saying it, you know? And it just, it just took everything out of her.
They keep on making me move. They've done ran me all the way down to the river, making me move. And now they want to run me off of there. Where else am I supposed to go? I have nowhere else to go to. You know, you can't keep making me move without a place for me to move to. What do you expect us to do? Not live? Not survive?
Miller Park is not a suitable place for people-
Miller Park is not a suitable place for people to go. You have to stop sweeping people.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Brooke. Calling Brooke is Nikki.
Hello, I'm Brooke. You probably recognize me because I come to almost every meeting. And I was born and raised in Sacramento, and I really care about my community. I, you know, me and Mr. Steinberg are community members, too. We went to the same swim club. I swam with Jordana and Ari when I was a kid. But yeah, I really love my community, and it really hurts to see my community hurting. These sweeps really hurt people, as you heard. They hurt our whole community. And we're living in a recession, and people are living paycheck to paycheck. And housing keeps getting more and more expensive. And so any of us housed folk are more and more at risk of homelessness. And I know I wouldn't want to be treated this way if I ended up on the street. And I don't think anyone else would. It's really inhumane. And I often hear politicians and NIMBYs using crime at encampments to justify these sweeps. But we all know that collective punishment is not the answer. If someone living in an apartment complex commits a crime, do we evict the whole complex? Or do we give them their due process? And not only that, moving people and throwing away their belongings only fills landfills and creates more insecurity. And we all know more insecurity leads to more crime. So how is destabilizing people and making them more insecure going to solve this problem of crime that you keep talking about? When we do these sweeps, our whole community suffers from it. Even the businesses suffer for it. We need real solutions. And the biggest obvious answer is affordable housing. And so I'm asking you, as our elected council, to do everything you can to create as much affordable housing as possible as fast as possible. Because our community is suffering, and Miller Park is clearly not humane and not enough. And what we're doing currently, the path that we're on, is economic apartheid. This is class war, and we need to do better, or it will get worse.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nikki, then T, then Mark Maron.
So to briefly comment on the presentation, although you said feedback was incorporated, it seems like measurable outcomes and numbers and timelines still seem to be missing. We know that most neighborhoods are experiencing the crisis of homelessness. It's not just about how many rabid phone calls you can get from which neighborhood that should be driving your policy related to people experiencing homelessness. There is no excuse for this ongoing violence. You heard how it impacts people directly. No amount of these rabid calls should convince you that this forced internal migration is good policy, or that places like Miller Park, or even the navigation centers, or even vouchers, are going to catch up with this economic health and social dynamic that we find ourselves in. As we feel the climate crisis in the air, we know that housing is climate justice. With almost 40% of the folks living outside being Black or African-American, also disproportionately Native folks, we know that widely accessible housing would be racial justice. With the truly unbelievable amount of people living with disabilities on the street, with our seniors, the fastest-growing age group, I'm glad to hear about this project, of unsheltered people, housing is disability and aging justice. We just have to get there. We don't have other options. For years, we've watched as the money comes and the money goes, and forced displacement always continues. And the pathways out of homelessness become more and more narrow, and the pathways in are constantly multiplying. We've employed 1,000 navigators to nowhere. We need strong tenant protections and due process rights in the rehousing and sheltering systems so that folks aren't constantly at risk of being cycled out. Proverbs 29:7 says, "A righteous man knows the rights of the poor; a wicked man does not understand such knowledge." I encourage you all to lean into that knowledge. We need transformation of a very broken emergency response system into an emergency-level aggressive pursuit of actual housing for people who the system broke trust with a long time ago. We're running out of time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is T, then Mark Maron.
Hi, my name is T. I live in District 5, Katy Maples District. Actually, I know Katy, actually. We did some outreach together during the pandemic. And I don't actually come here that often. I try not to because I get really frustrated and annoyed. It's not good for my mental health, and it's not good for my community. And yeah, I haven't been here in a while, and I'm already tired of it. I'm so tired of it. Do you all actually watch these tapes over again? Like, do you listen? Because you haven't heard yet? Do you go back and try to listen again? Because that's a really great resource for you. Because we need housing now. We need housing right now. Like, right now. Like, today, right now. Like, as I'm speaking right now, we need it right now. Because my neighbors are suffering. In the heat, crying, in the middle of night, all through the night. And no one's going to help them. No one. No one. We have to hear cries. Because it is economic apartheid. Because y'all don't have to deal with it. You don't know. You have no idea. You would never step into a tent. And luckily, Jay brought voices here. Thank goodness. And are you going to listen to that again? Are you going to listen to that again? Because did you hear it? Meltdown. The city is melting down. Everyone's watching you, and y'all can't even work together. Look at this council. It's beautiful. Very diverse. Beautiful city. Beautiful. We could be twin cities. Look how beautiful that city is.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mark Maron. And then I have five speakers online.
Hello, Mayor and members of the City Council. I really am here on a matter that's not going to be addressed until next week. I came a week early. So rather than just not appearing when my name is called, I just...
It's all relevant, as far as I'm concerned. So whatever your comments are, I'm sure they'll be in order. Go ahead.
Okay, what I was prepared to address was the mayor. What I understood was the mayor's proposal that City Manager Chan be authorized to designate places within the city where encampments of homeless people could be promoted and supported. Now, if that's not on the agenda, then perhaps this is not relevant. But I wanted to essentially support that with certain suggestions. And this is based on some experience, both at 12th and C Street, where there's a small encampment that's going into its third year now, as well as the Colfax leased self-governing encampment at 2225 Colfax Street. And basically, from that experience, we see people will live together and address and solve their problems if they're given at least a minimum of support. And that means they need electricity, they need power, they need autonomy, and they need some funds to run security. And they need something better than just a tent on a tarmac. And what has been provided by the city at the Camp Resolution site on Colfax are FEMA trailers, which might be wonderful and ideal, but not electrified and not connected to a sewer system or some waste disposal system. Really makes them virtually uninhabitable in temperatures like this. So those are things that have to be considered. There's a whole, long list of things that have to be considered, and I'd love to be able to meet with some committee or be part of some committee.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
That would make that possible.
I'll be in touch, okay?
Mayor, and I appreciate Mr. Maron because I know we're supposed to talk about it as well.
You are. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor, I have five more speakers. The first is Karen Humphrey, then Keon Bliss. Karen, if you'll unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Appreciate the time, Mayor, members of the council. The, I'm Karen Humphrey, a member of the Housing and Homelessness Committee of Sacramento. And I'm Area Congregations Together. And we are, we're really looking at this plan and suggesting that there are things that are not in it at this point. Maybe they'll be there by the time it's released, but it's getting close. And Sacramento Act really believes you've got to have a plan that will allow something to really happen. I have really heard the urgency spoken by some of these other folks, and I think that's a really important issue. So, and I'm sorry, I'm having a phone... There are a few things that we told the Board of Supervisors, and will tell you. The plan needs to talk about the scale of the problem of how many PSH units are needed to serve the needs of homeless individuals, and how the cost of services will be provided, the scale of the Affordable Housing Program that could help inform the way of keeping people from falling into homelessness, the recognition of the city and county's RHNA obligations, and the discussion of the gulf between sources that are just urgently needed. There's not enough money in the world to deal with this, and the plan needs to at least talk about it. We're suggesting that one of two things happen. You either direct the SHRA to take more time and develop a more robust plan that really addresses the affordable housing problems, or that you print them to do a not complete, but beginning plan, and turn it in on your time and then request additional expansion of these plans into a long-term, real plan that will have impact. So thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Greetings again, City Council. Speaking as an individual community member, I really want to appreciate members of my community who are rightfully raising the voices of our city and county residents who are living unhoused on the streets under insufferable conditions, absolutely dystopian conditions, where hundreds of people, every single year, die on the streets because they have no access to better housing or affordable housing, or even basic services from the city and county governments that are sworn to provide and promote their general welfare. And in contrast with that, city and county governments, both, are objectively punishing people simply for no other reason than they are unhoused, that they do not, that people do not like having to look at them and be reminded that even though we live in one of the wealthiest countries on earth, there are literally millions of people on the streets every year who cannot access basic resources and the basic necessities they need. And this continuous displacement and dispossession of their materials, which the city and county are guilty of, are actually killing people, increasing the mortality rate among city and county residents. For example, there was a recent study that modeled 23 U.S. cities on homelessness response over a 10-year timeline that showed the continuous displacement, especially with disrupted services, leads to devastating incomes as much as 151% increase in overdosed mortality, 11% reduction in life expectancy, 50% increases in hospitalizations, and among other much-needed disruptions. I'm glad to see that we're actually providing or planning to provide housing, but really, all I'm seeing is $10 million going to the usual suspects, which are landlords.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ.
Yeah, basically, I think what we're saying is more investment needed at all levels in response to homelessness. Before you can meaningfully discuss housing, you have to discuss the sweeps occurring. Stop the sweeps immediately. You have no shelter to offer. Every time you sweep an encampment, you set the people there back months in addition to the physical issues and the other deterioration that happens, like Keon mentioned. You destroy vital information they need to access benefits, which provide them a potential way out of the situations that they're in. You destroy the little survival gear they have, which sets them back in the fact that they have to go search for the same survival gear again. You waste resources that could actually go to housing them by doing the sweeps themselves. You waste resources that could actually go to putting up porta-potties, trash services, and other services they need so that they can survive and so they don't have a detrimental effect on the surrounding communities. You remove the ability for service providers, like Veterans Services, Medical Services, Addiction Services, to be able to find them and continue helping them. You remove their trust in their government to help them. You create more of an opportunity that in the future, they won't trust what you offer them because they've seen the way you treat them. You claim to offer them spaces in Miller Park Safe Ground, but that isn't shelter space. The law says you need to make an offer of shelter. The Chico decision lays out how tents on a tarmac does not qualify as a shelter, which must have walls and a roof. And the few spaces you offered were quickly taken up. Meanwhile, another sweep of 22nd and C is planned for in two days. With no additional shelter space to offer, you're violating your own laws because you're tired of housed constituents bitching. Tough shit. As they're so often prone to announcing, "It's the law. No sweeps without shelter, and you ain't got the shelter." Stop traumatizing those already traumatized. Stop traumatizing those dealing with intolerant families who have kicked them out, the members of the unhoused community of LGBTQ. Stop traumatizing those who are victims of abuse. Spouses that leave their houses are the ones that end up on the streets, and you're abusing them on top of what they've already been abused. There are better options than give Camp Resolution water and electricity.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dylan Hoyby-Yonky.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Yeah, hi. I'm calling in to speak on item 32, the City-City Affordable Housing Plan Workshop. I'm a little confused why y'all keep doing these things that you call workshops. Because they don't really, what does that mean to you, a workshop? To me, it would imply that there are a bunch of people coming together to actually do some work on an item and create something, in the case of a local government, some kind of policy that'll be implemented. That doesn't seem to be what's happening here. It doesn't seem to be what's been happening at any of these quote-unquote "workshops" that you've been holding, particularly around unhoused issues. They seem to always get scheduled for the earlier meeting during the day, which makes it more difficult for people to arrive. I would suspect that, again, much like at the previous times this happened, there was no effort made on the part of the city to ensure that unhoused people were present at this meeting. Looks like some folks were able to show up anyway, thankfully. But, you know, are you hearing their voices? I don't know. Either way, you should be making the effort to get them to be involved if you want this to truly be any sort of respectable quote-unquote "workshop." Finally, onto the substance of it. What I would like to say is, you know, if it hasn't been discussed already, it's possible I missed something. I think that the city should be strongly considering, at least relating to affordable housing, bringing back some sort of inclusionary zoning ordinance. We used to have one. It was scrapped under Kevin Johnson, which was a huge mistake. And the current setup, the fee that replaced it, is just so trivial as to be fully meaningless. You know, developers can easily not build affordable units into their new developments and get away with it basically scot-free because the fee you charge them is meaningless. We should have, we could have a very strong inclusionary zoning ordinance. We should. Even that's not enough, but it's at least a start. So I would encourage you to think about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is caller user 2. You'll unmute.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert. And when I listen to the homeless or unhoused homeless and all of these issues, it goes back to City Councilwoman, I can't remember which one. But she made a statement before the break that stuck with me. She said 1,300 beds go into $41 million. I don't know where she got the 41, but I'm just going with her math. And she said it was $32,000 plus per bed. That, there's the scandal, right there. Because you need to look into who the contractors are. Once you see who the contractors are, you'll know what's going on. It's simple math. $32,000 for a bed. I don't know anywhere in the city you can pay $32,000 to lay in a bed and not have restrooms, not have whatever you need for that. So the focus should be that the homeless has been co-opted by the contractors. And that's why there should be an audit on who the contractors are and where they bid-rigged and bid-petled. And then you'll be able to find out why there's no more beds. Beds is a numbers game. All you have to do is get more beds and spend less money with the contractors. All you have to do is get more beds and spend less money with the contractors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Do you want to explain the Q issue?
Yeah, yes, I'd like to just remind members of the public who, if you want to speak on an agenda item, before the item begins is when you need to turn in your speaker slip. We disable taking comments in chambers, and we also disable the Zoom link once the first commenter is completed.
I, I put in my comment before the meeting even began, for item 32.
On the consent calendar.
On the consent calendar, you did also turn that one in late, and we did take that one because you were in chambers, but this one, you did not turn it in before the item began or before the first speaker was complete.
Excuse me. No.
We turned in our paperwork in time, so what are you saying? Do I wait till after non-agenda items?
Yes. Okay, thank.
He turned in my paperwork in time.
Please, that's not nice, that's not fair. That, that's not fair. Okay, you know what? I, I, I'm tired of the rudeness in this chamber, I'm just going to say, especially to the city staff. So, you're not gonna, you're not going to win anybody over by anybody shouting out from the audience or treating people rudely. There, there you go. Okay, I, I want to, I want to begin here. First of all, this workshop, and I love the agency and love, yes, I mean, this is not a comprehensive plan. Maybe that wasn't what the expectation was. I mean, this, this is an outline of what we need to be working on, but I, I know, I will say that for purposes of the city and county partnership agreement, that I hope that this is just an outline and meeting template to actually get to a plan with production numbers and with some real meat behind it, because this isn't it.
If I could just respond to that. As you recall, when we were talking about coming forward within the six months, we did ask for extra time so that we could do the extensive outreach to all of the organizations that we were talking about, People with Lived Experience Act, the list goes on. And we wanted to also give an opportunity for all elected officials at both the county and the city to give us their input so that when we bring back exactly what you're talking about, it would be reflective of the things that you like. So, I just want to clarify that that's what the agenda is for today.
I appreciate the clarification. I just didn't want anyone to have the expectation or, or be upset that, well, this is, we're done with this. This is the beginning, not the end.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And our goal is to make sure that we get that draft to you well in advance before our meeting on September 12th, and that will have all the things that you're talking about.
Right. Because our challenge, of course, and it's not unique to the city of Sacramento, this is statewide and national, is that we're talking about shelter and we're talking about safe ground, in part because though we have been much more aggressive and successful in producing affordable housing in this city over the last three to four years, the demand far outweighs the, the supply. And so, we need to increase the supply. And, and, and that's partly what is at issue. We have a very important hearing next week on the safe ground strategy, and I don't intend to debate that today, but I do want to ask a series of questions that don't need to be answered today. They're intended for next week, and to sort of frame that discussion, because it is relevant, more than relevant to the affordable housing discussion that we're having, but affordable housing seeps in as it did today. It became primarily a, a hearing and a workshop about homelessness, and that's understandable given what we are all living through. And so, I listen to the advocates and have great sympathy for their position, but think about this. There were advocates in this chamber for years who advocated for safe ground. And Mark Maron, who I don't think anyone can top his credentials as an advocate for decades in this city and in this community, comes and says that the safe ground option, if done right, I'm paraphrasing, if done right, is much better than the status quo. So, people can come and take their two minutes and say whatever you want, but I, I know that as we have hundreds of additional temporary units coming from the state of California, as we are following through on a number of projects, as the county is following through on a number of projects that they have already approved, this will add up to many hundreds, if not four figures, of additional capacity, when, some I know coming online within, within weeks, I'm told, some longer throughout the second half of 2023, some timelines we don't control. So, why are we having this, why will we have this discussion about safe ground next week? Because the alternative waiting till all that capacity comes online is just plain not acceptable. And there are two reasons it's not acceptable. Number one, and there really, there are two truths, as there always have been with this issue. One is that, one truth is that we collectively, the city, the county, all the elected officials throughout the city and the county, the state of California, and I would argue the nation, which sometimes is missing from this debate, we have a profound responsibility to help the people who are suffering and suffering in, in, in the most profound ways. That's one truth. The other truth, which is just as important, and we must acknowledge in this community, is that the status quo of these unending tent encampments, and not just people living in tent encampments, but the drug abuse and the untreated mental illness, and some of the behaviors, yes, some of the behaviors, are completely unacceptable in the, in, in a civil community. At 28th and C, we talked about, one thing the advocates don't mention, there were 813 needles, 813 needles found at the 28th and C site. You don't think we have a responsibility to do something, including moving people to Miller Park or, and, and more safe ground to come? I'm sorry. That's not right. It's not right by the people you purport to represent, and it's not right for and by this community. So, when setting up this conversation for next week and thinking about what we have to debate, but also asking for ready, modern time, ready time evaluation of the city-county partnership agreement, I, I want to know the following, if I may. Number one, at 28th and, and I want to use this not because 28th and C is everything, but it is a real-time example of what it is we are, we, we seek to do, ultimately to help people, the housing, and get the services they need, but using safe ground and shelter as interim solutions. So, here are my questions. How long was the outreach at 28th and C? Okay? How, how long was, I'm sorry, okay. How long was the outreach at 28th and C? Did it include the city and the county? And was the outreach done consistent with the requirements and the principles of the partnership agreement? How many people were in the encampment during the, during the, the various phases of the outreach? How many people went to Miller Park voluntarily? How many people thus were moved from 28th and C to other parts of the downtown or other parts of the city? Were there any arrests made over the course of the outreach for any kind of criminal behavior, whether it be misdemeanor behavior or felony behavior in the encampment? Of the individuals who received the outreach, because I know it included the county mental health workers, maybe this is the most important question, how many people were enrolled in mental health or substance abuse services? How many enrolled in the HMIS system? I would like this to be front and center next week because the answers to these questions inform whether or not any strategy we adopt next week has a real prospect for success. The partnership agreement, the safe ground strategy, the shelter and housing strategy, the compliance strategy. I have a question for our Sacramento Superior Court, which I would invite them to participate next week, and ask them, and/or they can respond in, in any other way. I understand, and I don't know if it's true or not, but I understand that the county has in fact filed a number of Laura's Law petitions seeking, seeking to help unsheltered people with serious mental illness. I would like to know how many and what percentage of those Laura's Law petitions did the court, the court which has understandably complained about the state of the civic center. How many of those petitions did the court approve? To the county, I want to reiterate the question that was asked at the workshop a couple of weeks ago, and that is, how many FSP, full-service partnership slots, do you have funded currently? And how many are filled? And obviously, that relates to the earlier question about 28th and C, whether people have been awarded, not enrolled, and not just an FSP at 28th and C, but any form of mental health and/or substance abuse services. Uncoordinated access, I know Lisa Bates is here in the audience, doesn't have to answer this today, but I'd like to know how many beds, again, and where they are coming from? Are they coming from the city? Are they coming from the county? Where are they, especially for single adults? Especially for single adults. And so, I would like to use 28th and C as a, as a case study, without any predisposition, by the way, because I already know that a number of people did go to Miller Park, that there was some, that there was some success, but the degree of the success, and then what the follow-up plan, of course, the other question is, what is then the follow-up plan for people who don't go voluntarily, who are in now other parts of the city? And of course, this involves not just the city, potentially law enforcement, but also the county with regard to its civil commitment statutes, Laura's Law again, and the other, and the other tools that are available to say to somebody who's, who's obviously mentally ill or severely drug addicted, who are behaving badly in ways that are scary or, or threatening to others, what are we doing collectively as a system to ensure that those people get into treatment? Because even though Miller, the 28th and C may in the end, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss this more next week, may in the end be considered a success if half or more than half the people are scattered at the winds and there's no follow-up under the city-county partnership agreement, and with, with the other responsible public officials who are, have leadership in and around this area, then we're not going to help people, and we're not going to provide the relief that the community is urgently demanding of us. Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great tee-up for next week because it really is about having data when we make decisions. And I want to just appreciate our monthly meetings so that you always let me ask extra questions and go a little deeper as, as we did yesterday. But as we look at the city-county affordable housing work plan, I mean, I went back and found discussions, you know, and this has been going on for a long time, but even in the 2000s of us needing as a city more affordable housing, more production, something that is, is more of a plan online. So, as we look at what the housing work plan should be, I agree with your priorities, with an emphasis on increasing our permanent supportive housing production, but what I'd like to see when it comes back to us, we know what's coming now, and we know some of the things we've, we've approved, but what does it look five years from now? What does it look 10 years from now? Because this is a constant conversation that has never ended at the city. So, part of it is, I know we're planning, and I know how long it takes to go, come in, but what are we doing now so that three years from now, we're getting more? And what are we doing next year so that we have more four years from now, and the year after, so we have more five years from now? Because I think we need to see the comprehensive plan, because then that goes to, I think, our next discussion, Mayor, which you've brought up several times, and I think is important that we discuss of like housing. What is that bridge? What is it, that financing that we need to have to make affordable housing a reality? Because while we can talk about everything we want to do, we know there's an infinite amount in our budget money, but I think when we talk about a plan, I want to see a 10, 15-year plan. And if we've got nothing coming online planned five years from now, then we're in trouble and we need to start doing things. What is it we can do now? What are some of those strategies we look at? Because I think that also goes in and dovetails into part of the conversation we're going to have next week. I saw that in 2019, the council took a vote on kind of with SHRA of what is the homeless, you know, plan and six-point. Well, you've got six new members on this council since council last took action in 2019, which I think needs to be brought up because a lot of it goes in with affordable housing, safe grounds, and everything else. How do we create, this is not just a city-county SHRA, but housing is one of the biggest issues that we look at with our, with our unhoused. And I'd also like to look at, we know with the point-in-time contact information that we've received, that a significant increase is for our seniors that are becoming unhoused. So, how are we looking at with real-time data? How are we planning to address what we already know is coming? How are we streamlining? What are we looking at for our, our seniors and our most vulnerable population, which really, the younger generation, a majority of them tend to be LGBTQIA identified, and they're kicked out of their housing? And, and how are we, you know, providing that supportive housing, and what can we do faster and quicker? So, but, but really, priority I look at is how quickly can we get more affordable housing online? And if we don't have some coming in the next three to five years, what do we need to do? Where is it? What are the developers? How do we need to look at that? And what type of housing bond? We'll really address that because while we have a lot of work ahead of us, we don't have the money in front of us to be able to do what we need to do. And I think this is something our community, if we are very specific and data-driven, is more likely to approve something that has accountability built, built into it, but also the data that we know what is working. So, SHRA is in this every day. You're part of the X Street Navigation Center. Your staff is out there on the front line. We at city council have to know where are we spending our dollars that is actually working and making a difference? Because if we are to go for a housing bond, we need to point to the community that we did our homework, and this is why we're proposing A, B, C, and D in order to get something passed. And I know that data is there, it's just assimilating and bringing it forward, which is part of that city-county work plan, but I want to dovetail on what our mayor said. I think it, this is not something the city can go alone. We have got to work together. Housing work together, whether there are safe grounds, work together, the partnership outreach, how we handle things, this does really have to be the city and county working together. And I appreciate our city manager because those of us not on the four-by-two, like, we need to hear. Like, I don't know, I don't know what's going on. I know you're doing stuff, but, you know, I'm, we are not privy to that. We're having those reports come back to us at city council so that we don't violate the Brown Act is really important. So, I am very supportive of your priority one and two, but priority one almost needs to be like five times more important because it really is that long-term planning, because that's the only way. We're not going to meet our eight-year housing plan for our extremely low and affordable production. We never have. I'd like to maybe one time say that we did. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanzuela.
Thank you. I want to just touch on the point that's come up a couple times today about cost per person or cost per. person or cost per bed. Because I've spent a lot of time, there are a lot of services in District Four, and I've spent a lot of time touring them and talking to boards and talking to the folks who run them and talking to SHRA to understand that it does cost more to do case management, to provide safe spaces, to ensure people are being given the tools and supports and services they need. It costs way less than when they're on the street. I think we tend to assume like a zero-dollar figure when somebody's out on the street, but that's not it, not only for them as people, but for us as a city, not just in like trash pickup and it's emergency department visits, it's calls for service, it's like name it, name it, name it. And then you add on what that individual is now experiencing in terms of cumulative trauma, cumulative issues. I mean, the cost for every day, every minute someone's on the street is not zero. And so I think it's important that we talk about cost in frame, because I do appreciate people's concerns with something like safe camping and parking. I really do. It's not ideal. If it were up to me, we would have had all the housing, not just today, to use T's point, but yesterday, we would have those options. Our shelters in our streets are full of people who have income, who are never going to afford a market rate rent. It's just not possible. We could build, I was listening to a podcast the other day, and they were like, how much market rate housing do we need to build to make sure there's no homelessness? And they were like, that's not possible, right? Like, this economist was like, no, I mean, yes, that will lower costs for middle-income families and for working families, but that's not possible for someone making $900 a month because they're seniors on disability, you know? Like, that's just not possible. We need to subsidize housing, we need the affordable housing, and something like Miller Park is not ideal. I think what we talk about, though, stabilizing people on the streets so that we can direct more money into housing, like there are some places where encampments are today that might be good candidates for bathrooms. And I know some of my colleagues mentioned the triage services, I think Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Kaplan, and Talamontes put forward a proposal to say, what does it look like to triage camps where they are? We talked to the Snake Pit, right? I remember when Bridget Dean first came into DCR, she went back there and they said, oh yeah, we totally take that. We would totally love to be staffed and to have bathrooms and trashcans and meals and stuff. So what does it look like to stabilize people? And that's the conversation next week, right? Like, how do we learn from what's working and not working at a place like Miller Park to continue to evolve that model? And I'm just, I just want to take a note that I'm proud that our city is talking about safe camping and parking, because I don't want the critiques of Miller Park to overshadow the fact that when Mark Maron was setting up 12th and C, that was a fight. That was a fight. That was not something the city was used to, that was not something that fit our code enforcement. Like, I was not yet in office and I was calling code enforcement people, being like, please don't shut this down, and we're going to try something new. And now we're actually talking about, what does it look like to stabilize people outdoors so that we're not spending way, way more money on something? Like, I don't want to spend money on 10,000 shelter beds. That's not the solution here. The solution is breaking the pipeline, because I want to reiterate what Nikki said in their comments when they mentioned navigation to nowhere. Because that is sort of where we are, right? Like, we have over 2,000 shelter beds. A lot of those folks are stable now. A lot of those folks have gotten services. A lot of those folks have their paperwork in order, they've gotten their benefits, they're ready, but they can't afford, they can't find any place they can go. Remember when we did the siding plan, someone called in from St. John's, a woman who'd been there for too long, and she was basically like, look, I want to free up the bed for the next woman and child behind me who needs this spot, but I can't leave yet because I've gotten this job and there's just like, there's nothing for me. I can't find anything. So I'm really glad we're talking about this, because yes, folks need services, they need temporary stabilization, but yes, eventually when they're ready, they need housing. And that has been the part of our homelessness conversation that we have been missing, is that connection between housing and where we are. So I appreciate what you're doing, and I want to appreciate, LaShelle, your comments about needing a little bit more time, because this is new for us, which is unfortunate to say, but I think to Councilmember Kaplan's point, we've never really talked about what it's going to look like to produce. We've planned for it, right? We do the housing element and we do projects sort of in individual chunks when we get funding available, but we've never really talked about a strategy. How many permanent supportive housing units do we need? What would that cost? What is it going to take for us to move the levers of government to provide for the folks that the market will never provide for? They never will. It's just, it's simple mathematics. So I just want to lift up that and say, there are a couple of things here that are missing for me that I think are really important, especially in light of the UC San Francisco report. And that was the podcast I was listening to, actually, that I referenced, it was the Ezra Klein Show, and he did a whole episode on the UCSF report. And if you haven't listened to it, if you're trying to understand these issues, I really recommend you listen to that podcast. It does a really good job of breaking down this study, which is the most comprehensive we've had, and Sacramento was a participant in this study. We provided data, so this includes us. But when they talk about the levers that drove people into homelessness, right? They talk a lot about exiting, right? Which I think this focuses on, well, having good job access, right? Having access to housing, that's part of it. But they also talk about what led people into homelessness. And in some cases, the most startling finding in this study was that it was $300 to $500 sometimes for somebody, right? $300 to $500. If they had just had that one-time infusion of cash, they could have moved, or they could have caught up on the rent, or they could have fixed the car, or they could have done the thing that eventually led the cascade effect that led them to being on the street, on a couch in a car on a street. So I don't want to lose in a housing strategy that emergency funding. And not just rent assistance, because we know a lot of homeowners struggle sometimes with emergency repairs or they have an unexpected bill. So I think that emergency, how do we prevent people from losing their housing is always going to be the cheapest harm reduction approach to homelessness. Because that's when we talk, when people on the street and the constituents are like, oh my gosh, these numbers have tripled, what the heck are you doing? That's one of the pieces we're missing, is we don't have, and we have 4,900 households that were waiting for emergency rent assistance that we weren't able to figure out funding for. Seventy percent of those households are extremely low income. Those are folks that are on the path to going to the street simply because the government, we couldn't get just enough money to fill that need. And we are now going to spend probably 10 times that much helping them get off the street, once they get onto the street, to get into housing. And so that's one strategy that I really want to make sure we don't lose, because I think it's a cost-saving measure, and it's also just based on the research and the data we do have, which is, we're really lucky that report came out before we did this. And then the other part of this is purchasing of existing buildings, because we lose buildings when they go for sale. And I'll use an example of a senior housing complex on Capitol across from the Sophia. It was a huge, you'll know it, it's between Sutter and Sophia, that really tall, kind of weird 80s-ish looking concrete building. When they sold that, I mean, they didn't do anything wrong, right? I mean, it was out of its deed restriction, it didn't need to be senior housing anymore. Like, they were doing it right. But when they convert that into condos, that's now 100-something units we don't have for seniors anymore. And granted, it wasn't affordable senior housing, but that was an opportunity site, right? Like, when the Holiday Inn went for sale on 16th Street, that was an opportunity site. Like, how do we focus on, because that's always going to be cheaper per door if we're purchasing buildings and retrofitting them versus if we're constantly having to build new. But I just want to put into frame again, like, the existing buildings, but preventing displacement is going to be the strongest anti-homelessness strategy we can do. If we can keep people housed where they are, we can start focusing on the folks that are out there. And we can move, as the mayor often says, we do get people off the street successfully. This is not a matter of not knowing what to do, it's a matter of the, it's gone too big. We just simply, the system can't manage the number of people. So if we can slow down the inflow and then start focusing on the folks that are on the street, maybe we actually have a chance of making the type of tangible progress I know we'd all like to see in the next year or two. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you, well, thanks for briefing me ahead of this. And also, you know, I just really think a coordinated approach is what we need. You know, we need to have something that's bigger, it's bigger than us, because this is a problem that's bigger than us. I wanted to point out one little thing that I appreciated that was mentioned in the PowerPoint, which is connecting the housing providers into the coordinated access system. I think that's huge, because that's where, you know, at least in my conversation wins with service providers and people who are out in the street, that's where some of the, I think the bottleneck or the challenge becomes, is you have a lot of people who need the housing, maybe they're in a place where they can even get into it, but they're not, it's not easy for them to connect. And I know that, you know, some of the county core sites, for example, they do the behavioral health stuff, but they don't necessarily have that direct access to housing placement. So I think if we can figure out a way to make those pieces connect or advocate for that, that would be huge. I also recognize that it's really, this is really challenging and maybe frustrating conversation for you all, having been in this game so long, that, you know, it's not for lack of, you know, understanding what to do, as Councilmember Valenzuela brought up, but also it's resources, right? Like, I think something that gets lost oftentimes is kind of how we got here, why we're here. You know, one big thing I think of a lot is that, you know, our federal moratorium on public housing that was enacted in the 1990s, you know, that took away stock, that took away things that we could, if we were investing at a federal level in public housing all of that time, imagine what we could have. And then, you know, additionally, the end of redevelopment in California. Nobody wants, people don't want to talk about that, but that was, you know, something in the early 2010s that really has taken away a huge resource to our ability to build the housing that we need. And so, you know, one of the things that, you know, we talked about, it's not just what we're going to concretely do, but what can we advocate for? I would love to see, you know, how can we use not just, you know, our advocacy resources at the city, legislative advocacy and other ways, but, you know, our other agencies like SHRA and the county and anyone else who might want to participate, to advocate to our state legislature and say, can we bring back some version of redevelopment? Can we bring back some dedicated funding source so that we can have the funding that we need in addition to whatever other funding measure there might be? Because I think that's important to note. It's not for lack of the city not wanting to build housing. It's not for lack of SHRA not wanting to build housing. It's truly a resource issue. And unfortunately, due to that federal and state disinvestment, it's fallen on local governments' laps, and we are ill-equipped, unfortunately, at this time to deal with it. And so I just think that's important to say, because not everybody does understand the background and the history. I also want to say that, you know, I know that you've, one of the other big challenges that I think we can, you know, maybe advocate for with your expertise in particular, Ms. Dozier, at the state level, is how do we refine the tax credit process, right? One of the things that I hear the most when I, because one of the things I sought out to do as I took on this job, I am not an expert on affordable housing whatsoever, and so I've made it a point to sit down with affordable housing developers and people in the space and ask them, what are the challenges here? Why can't we get housing built yesterday? Because that's what I want, and that's what my community wants. And one of those challenges is just, you know, the process for getting funding for these needed resources is crazy. It kind of blows my mind that this housing gets built at all. And I know, so, you know, that's one of the things that we can maybe add to our legislative platform and say, let's advocate for this, let's have a more streamlined tax credit process, or maybe it's not the tax credit process at all, maybe it's something else. And there are people who are much smarter than I, that can actually, that know those things, but I'd love to put that as a part of like the big picture stuff that we're talking about when we talk about affordable housing plan. I know, this is not on the building side, but I know one of the other challenges that we have at times is with the voucher system and really recruiting those landlords to participate in the system. And so, you know, I know that that's something that SHRA that you're currently working on is how do we get, how do we improve that engagement process and get more landlords? So I'd love to see maybe an update about those efforts in the plan, because I think, you know, this could be a matter of, you know, we do have people in Sacramento who have vouchers, many of them, and who are trying to get connected to that housing. Some of those people contact my office and I just, you know, it always breaks my heart to read those emails, and I want to find a way that we can actually, you know, recruit and retain not just quality employees at the city, but more landlords for our voucher system. And this, my last, this point is actually, might be more of a city thing, it might be, you know, us advocating not just internally, but with our county partners as well. But I think we really need to take a look at, what are our challenges locally to getting housing built? What are the things that we can do? Do we need to streamline our building permit process? Do we need to take a look at, what are the, obviously, we have inclusionary zoning, that's been brought up, that's something that's coming forth in the general plan update, but, you know, are there other things that we can do internally at the city to make it easier to build housing so that when people are ready to build affordable housing, we are not the barrier? Let it be something else, but not us. I know that Councilmember Valenzuela brought this up, you know, on the prevention side, you know, I'm a broken record on this, but once I heard the statistic, I can't stop saying it, you know, for every one person that exits homelessness, three enter. The prevention piece is so crucial, otherwise it was not going to matter what we do on the backend. We have to stop the flow of people that are ending up on our streets that are losing their housing. I recently met with legal services in Northern California, and I was really blown away to hear about the wave of evictions that have happened in Sacramento since the beginning of the year. We have people who are losing housing at an alarming rate in our city and our region. And so, you know, I'd love to, on a big-picture perspective, our tenant protection's a part of this. Is that something we should be advocating for? What does that look like? How do we keep people in their homes so that we can actually deal with what's right in front of us and not just have a constant flow? It's, I don't know how we'll ever get our arms around it if we don't take a look at that. And then, you know, just a couple of other things on the legislative advocacy side. I know that Assemblymember Lee has legislation for state social housing. That might be something that we consider taking a look at in our legislative platform as well. And so, those are some of the key points that I hope that, they may not all fit in within what you originally imagined in the Affordable Housing Plan, but I think if we think about it from a very big picture and we look at all of the other factors that are at play here, these are all really important. So I just, thank you, thank you for your work, and I look forward to seeing the full plan later on.
Thank you very much. Last thing about funding, I'm just going to give a little tease and a preview in my upcoming State of the City address next month, I'm going to talk about housing finance specifically and local funding. So, working on that, because it's essential. It's absolutely essential. Okay, that's the item. Strasquera, you want to go? What's that? Okay. So we have put off, just so members are clear, thank you to everybody for last presentation. We have postponed the afternoon meeting to 5:30, and the young people, and YPSY know that, so that's good. We have an important closed session, so we're going to try to knock this item out in 15 minutes. And a seven presentation, I'm leaving you time for questions. All right. What's that? Well, I'll tell you what, here's the deal. Why don't we get started? And if it's extensive discussion, I don't want to rush it, then we'll put it over, okay?
So Mayor, quick question, just process. Don't audits, and especially this, normally come to budget and audit committee first? And did this go to budget and audit?
We've been so jammed at the budget and audit committee that I think we kicked it off twice. And so, we were trying to respect the very important work here, and it really is important work. You know, just it's, there's other pressing business, so we're doing the best we can here.
Just trying to say respecting the process, because...
We could send it to P and P.
Fine. Come on, we get stuff done at P and P.
Actually, it's kind of a nexus. It actually, it actually, it actually is a nexus. So, I don't know. Why don't we get started? Why don't you make the presentation? Maybe we will kick it off, because I do think, then we'll put it over for continued discussion. Why don't we do that? How's that a compromise? Go right ahead.
All right. So, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Faris Darari, the Assistant City Auditor. The first recommendation that is before you is to pass a motion by two-thirds vote to temporarily suspend Council Rules of Procedures, Chapter 15B, to bypass this report going to the Budget and Audit Committee, as our next meeting is not until September. City Clerk, can we take a vote for this?
I'm moved.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain, please.
Wait, we're suspending it? So it doesn't have to go to budget and audit?
Correct.
Only to hear it?
That's a vote on.
We can give all the traction.
Then I'm now on policy.
Okay, so it's 8-1 in terms of waiving the rule.
7-1.
7-1, excuse me, 7-1 in terms of waiving the rule. Councilmember Kaplan opposed. Let's proceed, but we're not going to take a vote today, undoubtedly, because we're going to hear it, and then we're going to continue the hearing for further discussion, because it's important and I want to spend time on it.
Okay. So the recommendation was to pass a motion, but if you wanted to just hear it...
Let's get to the audit, please. Get to it.
The Auditor's Office released the first diversity assessment of boards and committees and commissions in April 2017. The City Council expressed a desire to regularly report on the gender and I think diversity of city board, committee, and commission members. And since then, we've conducted this review in 2019, and this is our third report on the diversity of board, commission, and committee members. So at the time of this review, the city had 31 boards, committees, and commissions, not including those that are comprised entirely of city council members. 25 of them were comprised entirely of city appointments, while six were multi-jurisdictional and included both city-appointed and non-city-appointed seats. For the multi-jurisdictional boards, our review did not analyze the diversity of the non-city-appointed members, as the city did not have this information on file. So as of September 2022, there were a total of 277 city and non-city-appointed seats on the various boards, committees, and commissions. Two hundred and thirty-six of these were city seats, and 199 of them were filled at the time of our review. The objective of this assessment was to review the diversity of board, committee, and commission applicants and members as it compares to the diversity of city of Sacramento residents. Our analysis focused on applicants and members of all city-appointed seats and board, on boards, committees, and commissions as of July 2022. To conduct our assessment of boards, committees, and commissions, we relied on data provided by the City Clerk's Office regarding the diversity of applicants and seated members. However, as I'll discuss later in the scope limitation and finding sections for this audit, we did have some concerns with the data provided by the City Clerk's Office. So generally accepted government auditing standards require that auditors obtain sufficient and appropriate evidence to address audit objectives. In addition, the standards require auditors to report any limitation encountered during the course of an audit. To comply with standards, the report discloses an audit limitation that prevented us from meeting some of our audit objectives. The limitation was created when the city clerk's new onboard system disassociated the demographic information from the identity of the individuals. As a result, we could not validate the accuracy of the data received, and we're not able to analyze the composition of the seated individuals by board, committee, and commission as has been done in previous reports. Despite our limitation on validating the information, we used the data as it was the best available information to conduct our more limited analyses in Chapters Two and Three. The government alliance on race and equity stressed the importance of data in seeing whether programs or policies have worked and state that developing mechanisms for collecting data and evaluating progress will help measure whether racial equity is being advanced. This figure identifies some types of analysis that we are unable to conduct due to the data limitation. It's also no longer possible to track the changes in ethnic and gender composition over time, nor is it possible to compare the demographics of the applicant pool with the composition of each board, committee, or commission. Since the onboard data does not contain key variables, such as the name of the individuals, we could not rectify what appeared to be inaccurate information. For example, we identified one of the members in the data set with the birth year of 2020, making them almost two years old at the time of our analysis. This obvious area, error could not be corrected as the lack of detail prevented us from identifying the member whose information was incorrect. To illustrate the limitation in this audit, this figure identifies the boards, committees, and commissions that had more than half of their seats filled by one ethnicity or race in our 2019 report. For example, in 2019, the Preservation Commission's appointed members were 71% white. Because the reports we were provided for this year's audit no longer include the board, committee, or commission of the appointed members, we cannot conduct a similar analysis for 2022 to assess whether the appointments the City Council has recently made to these boards, committees, and commissions more closely reflect the ethnic, racial, or gender diversity of Sacramento residents. As a result, we had one finding in this report that disassociating demographic data from the board, committee, and commission applications in the new onboard system created audit limitations. It eliminated our ability to conduct data reliability testing and limited our ability, oh, sorry, conduct data, detailed analyses of diversity of board, committee, and commission applicants and appointed members. I could skip through a few slides after this one. According, sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Again, this is, I'm trying to just juggle the time on everyone's behalf here. I think you've, what you've teed up here, I think, might be a good place to pause, just for now. Namely, the issue of whether or not we want the clerk to report diversity data specific to each commission. And as I understand it, that the prior direction of a city council was to not have the clerk report that. The auditor is pointing out that it should be. And so I think that is teed up for us to give direction. I know where I stand on it now, going forward. Is that, is that the main import of the audit here?
Basically, yeah. Can I do this, this one slide with the recommendation?
Sure.
So according to the City Clerk's Office, the Clerk's Office worked with the onboard software vendor to disassociate the demographic information from the applicants because they believed it could cause a chilling effect on people who are hesitant to disclose personal information in the applications, and they wanted to protect the demographic information. While we understand the clerk's concerns, in our opinion, there is significant value in conducting more detailed analyses of the board, committee, and commission diversity with validated data, which we couldn't do at this time. While protecting the information as well. So we recommended that the Clerk's Office work with the software vendor to capture the data elements that we need to facilitate data reliability testing and more detailed analyses by board, committee, and commission.
And Mayor, to your point, you are right. We're going to pause here. There's a couple more slides that show some of the analysis that we were able to do, but we were going to skip that so that we could facilitate the discussion and answer any questions.
I believe I know very strongly where the council wants to go on this. But again, if the members are okay, I'm just trying to manage your time here. If that's okay. The question has been teed up, as they say. We will re-agendize this for the, if we can, the first item two weeks from now, if not next week. I don't know, let us see, but within two weeks, okay? So that this direction, which I'm pretty confident what it will be, can, can be communicated by the council. Okay? Mayor Protamfang?
Yeah, that sounds good. Forward to the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there council, are there, we have council ideas and questions, and we have public testimony and items not on the agenda. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, just very briefly, I won't announce any events or anything. I just wanted to request from the city manager and team maybe an update on contract negotiations with our city unions at an upcoming closed session, maybe the next one. Great, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes?
I guess we've skipped the agenda item now, but just thank you, Jorge and Farishter, for your presentation. And I look forward to next month. You guys do incredible work, and I want you to know that we value you.
It's important, thank you. Okay, council, public testimony and items not on the agenda. How many do we have?
Mayor, currently have five speakers. The first is Johnny Smith. I believe Mr. Smith has left. Dr. Truth Bay, Zion Taddis, Patricia Millsap, and then Mary Blazovich.
Okay. Good evening. I apologize for earlier homelessness. Sign up brings a certain emotion. But we got to get real. On data, I'm a housing navigator. That's my background. In 2019, Gavin Newsom put out a position called the Homeless czar in which the entire state of California who was qualified to apply for it. We, we applied amongst 17 other organizations. And in October, Gavin Newsom is backing away from the campaign to promise to appoint a cabinet-level Secretary on Homelessness, which is the homeless czar position. So his cabinet members, which include you, Mayor Darrell Steinberg, Margaret Lee Thomas, was the one that put in Gavin Newsom's ear to remove that position off the table when he had lived experience, solution makers, data-driven, evidence-based agencies applying for it. So at that moment, the message was, we're not really trying to solve homelessness. We, we're making too much money off of it. So this is why I'm going to take this very personal. We have resources to navigate housing, to bridge the gap and clean up the streets yesterday. My question to you is, city manager, our mayor, and the eight districts, are you willing to allow the agencies who have the solution to execute the solution? That's the question that's going to be left at the table today because your actions will speak whether or not we're going to do a Los Angeles move by hiring an agency to waste millions and millions of HUD funding like Lhasa does year after year. We have $150 million that we can account to that is wasted as we speak. We can revisit that, bring it back, outreach and engagement, clean up the encampments, and use lived experience people who are doing the groundwork. We're not going to be, you're not going to be out there in these streets. We are. So when we're bringing you the data, we need the resources and the funding from the federal government to go straight to the organizations, not to municipalities to take the crumbs. That's how we're going to solve the homeless crisis.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Zion Taddis, then Patricia Millsap. Is Zion here? Thank you. Patricia Millsap, and then Mary Blazovich.
Hello, me again, sorry. Thank you for having me again. You know, for me again, you know, when they ask, when it comes to restaurant, what is it you're looking for first? Location, location, location. So for all this problem you guys saying, we need equity, 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 equity. If we don't put that equity into our businesses, our health and wellness, our education in housing, especially our community, 40% of our black people is out in the homeless when only 13% of us. So, but I feel like there is a huge, the equity, the California makes over nearly a $3 trillion tax revenue. But if you look at where all that goes, probably 0.01% goes into the black community. So if we don't put that money in the funds or that equity into our community, who's doing the work? Like us, like the community? Then I feel like there is a huge disconnect between the city official, the state official, and the people that they're supposed to be serving, which is the underserved, underrepresented community. Which I still feel those communities are still not being represented because they still out there homeless. They still out there looking for funds to start their businesses. They, they're out there trying to solve the problem. But if you don't come to us, the people who are doing the work underground, there's still going to be a huge disconnect that the community, that especially the underserved community you, you're serving. So I say again and again, if we don't put that equity in the, from the, from the budget, billions of dollar budgets into our community, we're still going to have that problem. So we can create housing, we can create education, we can create businesses and nonprofit.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Patricia Millsaps.
You.
And then filling Patricia is Mary Blazovich.
It's an honor just to be here. Thank you. So with that being stated, I'd just like to say I'm a small businesswoman here in Sacramento, and I know that there haven't been a lot of different resources. And that's all I'm saying. Funding, different funding since the pandemic. It's a pandemic after pandemic. And on top of that, I'm in all the districts. I'm a local Sacramento in District Four, 405 J Street, Sacramento, California. With the fire department, that's the only thing that has been on a whole bunch of red tape that's been down there. And we do need stuff, we do need, we have a population where we're not, we're not conservative. We do have a hip-hop population where we do deal with young, the young and the youth. And so we're just asking for the people just to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary, have six speakers online. The first is Keon Bliss.
Mayor City Council, speaking for myself as a community member that's been watching these meetings for many years now. I'm just going to point out what someone alluded to earlier, which was actions speak louder than words. I've been saying that since I first started speaking at, up at city council meetings. And it seems like it just continuously falls on deaf ears. And several of you who've been on for many years just keep repeating the same errors or just like ignoring that and expecting different results, expecting people to like come to these meetings with respect for your decorum and to speak like the way you describe as civil when we're talking about huge issues of life, of literally of life and death. So I want to point out that authenticity is a lot, for me, is a lot like yawning. You can't fake it. And people can actually recognize the ones on this body as well as across the city that are actually putting in the effort and the ones who are not. Which is why you, you'll notice how people can be critical to some of you versus others of you. There are significant gaps in trust that no one, no matter how good, progressive, or sincere their intentions may be to close, like they're going to close to make people trust the city. Is that, that the city is actually doing something around crisis-level issues like homelessness. But some of you on city council and in the city are not do, like, are doing your, those people no favors. When you routinely rudely cut off public comments and throw up barriers to public participation in these matters that are literally life and death. And you know who you are. You're directly, like, and when you're complaining about the issues of homelessness, just remember one thing. People do, like, people resort to whatever feel-good measures they can when they're devoid of all hope. And the city and county dispossessing people are directly contributing.
Thank you for your comments. Mary, I'm sorry, I skipped over you. So Mary Blazovich is next. Following Mary is PJ.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. I yelled at you over the phone, and I'm apologizing publicly to the mayor. And hi, you guys, I'm glad you're here. Why am I here? Okay. As you can see, I'm an old lady. So of course, my brain just, the cobweb just jammed up my brain. I have three Marines, two Purple Heart veterans, two police officers, and one child that mustered out of the Army of Special Services because they wanted him to go crooked. Okay? And he told them to bite the bullet. I'm here tonight because I want to see K Street cleaned up. I yelled at the mayor over the phone. We need to do something. There was something on the radio, on the news. Some coach who had been violated as a child ended up violating 20 little boys and had it on a, had it on a cell phone. Second point, I want this, us to come up and speak to be extended from two minutes to two minutes and 30 seconds. Because when I left the last time, I was, I felt a grind. And I don't like that feeling. So if we could have, and I don't, you guys know how much time you need. And if that's going to be too much time, and you're going to let us know. But, Mayor, drugstore, some fast food, nice little shops, and some little higher-level eating places, and clean up that filthy pigsty. As you can see, I'm not a happy person, but, but I'm an American. And my family, the blood is on the ground. We own it. You own it, you own it, you own it, and I own it. Okay, let's take care of it.
Our next speaker is PJ.
All right. So when you say you're not going to win anybody over by shouting or with rudeness, people don't only deserve to have their humanity hurt if they're polite. Politeness is only ever able to come from those with the time and the ease to be polite. Those are the ones who are doing the harm. They aren't actively being harmed. You, by being in charge of this, Mayor, aren't actively being harmed. You are perpetuating harm, and you don't get to police how those being harmed are to bring their trauma to you for you to respect them. That is abusive behavior. And Darrell, why do people use drugs? Who uses drugs? People experiencing trauma, people harmed by the reality of their existence and what they deal with, people abandoned by their families, people sexually assaulted, people with other mental health issues that they can't get proper treatment for because the county doesn't spend enough money. Who are you to tell them how to deal with their trauma when you sweep them and make it impossible for them to have the relevant services they need? Who are you to police their trauma? Failure to appear on a fine can be a misdemeanor issue. You conflate that to violent crime by trying to associate it with the encampment at 28th and C.[1687.85] and C, but yet you're the one out here putting fines on people existing outside and expecting them to abandon their survival equipment to go over and have a court date. They don't have the ability to do that. You set up the way for them to have misdemeanors against them. If you want to use Twenty-Eighth and C as a case study, then have advocates asking the tough questions. You're part of the bureaucracy. You're predisposed to believe it has been dealt with flawlessly, because it affects, because it necessarily reflects back on you if it isn't working well. And as far as with regards to ShotSpotter, if we invest in stopping the potential for gunshots to ever occur, and let's say we have a hundred thousand dollars, and it worked out to say a thousand dollars per incident, we're able to discuss issues with ninety-seven more people than with ShotSpotter, if it costs thirty thousand dollars per person. And we stop them from ever experiencing trauma, we stop them from ever getting in that pipeline, we stop them before they're harmed, Sean, and that's the goal. What this does is require a comprehensive holistic look at the data and not an unquestioned bootlicker-like support of the cops and everything that comes out of their mouth, because when they mention that shot they responded to and the victims they found, they don't --
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Matthew Winters.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. My name is Matthew Winters, resident of District Seven, and I'm here to speak about something that might seem somewhat innocuous or insignificant related to everything that's been brought up today. However, it is something personal to me, and I feel like it greatly affects the Sacramento community and residents, and that is gasoline leaf blower noise levels that are basically being completely unenforced within the city. So eight-point-six, eight-point-one-eight-zero stipulates that leaf blowers within residential neighborhoods in the city should not exceed sixty-five decibels. That is in line with anti-category-one leaf blowers. And basically, I have made it my mission to find out what levels they are producing. And within the city, most leaf blowers are double those noise, double that noise level. And basically, the reason I bring this up again and again is because the lack of enforcement. I have pulled a public records request and found that there have been several hundred complaints and basically zero citations issued. With regards to these noise levels, they are declared a public nuisance by the, by the city within the city code. And within that, and with respect to that, I want to highlight the California Penal Code three-seven-two, which stipulates that any, you know, official that does not enforce and correct public nuisances is guilty of a misdemeanor. So I think the city really does have a responsibility to take these complaints seriously and respond timely and actually give them their due, you know, credence and actually look into these and cite individuals that they find to be in violation of those, of those noise levels. Thank you again for your time, and I sympathize with you all and all the problems the city faces. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lambert Davis.
Yes, this is Lambert, and I'm going to play something. This is an eighteen-year-old, pay attention, Mayor, I know you're happy for us, I hope Mr. Lolli is, and hopefully the city manager's office. This is an eighteen-year-old TikTok genius. Watch this. (singing) Put a band back cheesecake, put a band back cheesecake. Know it's gonna be a good day with the to the band back cheesecake. One bite will change your life. One bite will change your life. One bite will get you right. One bite will get you right. Put a band back cheesecake, put a band back cheesecake. Know it's gonna be a good day with the to the band back cheesecake. One bite will change your life. One bite will get you right. Put a band back cheesecake, put a band back cheesecake. Know it's gonna be a good day with the to the band back cheesecake. Now, that's an eighteen-year-old who just graduated from Grant High School. Shout out to the Paceret. And after, and after she did that, and I'm a baby boomer, I didn't even, I still don't understand TikTok. She came to me, and during, and I know you'll be happy for us, Mayor, during the Fourth of July, our cheesecakes in writing were voted the best in Northern California, not Sacramento, Northern California. These young people are amazing, and it's time for District Two to reach out to me. There's no more excuses about diversity equity. You should be reaching out to me, city manager's office, all them divisions you have, because we should be funded. Don't talk to me about diversity equity.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Wing Tech. We have two more speakers.
I'm proud, by the way.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you. This is Crystal with Sacramento Homeless Union, and I'm speaking out tonight to remind you guys that at this time last year, you guys were unable to sweep encampments due to a lawsuit that was brought by Sacramento Homeless Union versus the city of Sacramento. We are still in the same conditions, except for they have exploded, and it's completely disgusting what's happening. I want to talk about C Street, Evergreen, and the multiple areas in which you guys are sweeping, giving away property freely. So what happened with that is you guys put up citations, and they have lists of shelters, they have two-one-one contact, you have DCR telling people to call two-one-one. So I did that. With that being said, I called seven of the shelters that were given on one of the citations. Every one of them did not have resourcing at all. Most of them literally had wait lists. One of them wasn't even a shelter anymore. And so then I reverted to two-one-one, which is the, you know, referral that everybody's giving. And what they did was they sent me a coordinated access system community link list, and what that does is they told me that they didn't have any shelter beds available and that people would have to go on a twenty-to-forty-minute call to do an assessment. People don't have cellphones to do these things, they don't have the charge to do this. So, you know, I gladly took this email. This email turns around and reverts me right back to two-one-one. So this is inaccessible for our folks who are experiencing homelessness. Now, I want to talk about the shelters really quickly. What we are seeing is people going into these longer-term shelters, at the time it was Sacramento Self-Help Housing and other ones like that, they're sitting in these programs until they can no longer be in these programs. They're not exiting the housing, and so what's happening is they're going back to the streets. And so what we're seeing again is just this trauma that is nonstop. We are recycling homeless people without services, and we're violating federal laws, and we're violating laws that have been put in place and lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Richard Wake is our final speaker this afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, Richard Wake, City Council, District Five, excuse me, Seven. Used to be in Five. Anyways, this past Sunday, I was why, was watching a news program called Matter of Fact that's hosted by Soledad O'Brien, that used to be on CNN, and interviewed a woman that was the head of the National Alliance to End Homelessness. I don't remember her name, but the two key points of what this woman said to Ms. O'Brien in the interview was, number one, homelessness is driven by affordable housing. I've been doing this for thirty years, that's what the data shows. Number two, all the time, I go out in the streets to talk to people, all sorts of different places, and every single one of these people is telling me the, that, you know, everyone needs to be treated with compassion and dignity and respect. That's not happening here in Sacramento. It's not. Anyone who says that is fooling themselves. If we were going to talk about having people get treated with dignity and respect, you ought to really take a look at Crystal Sanchez, who just spoke. You ought to take a look at what Kimberly Church was doing, what Armando Flores was doing, and what Councilwoman Maple used to do before she got on the city council. That's what compassion is all about. Y'all should be giving those four people the keys to the city, because that's what compassion is. You guys don't do that. You're not doing it. I don't see how any of you could possibly think that what is happening now is compassion. It's not. And you know, I totally agree with what Lambert Davis said earlier in one of his other comments on item thirty-two. The city of Sacramento needs to open up the books on these nonprofits. Thirty-two thousand dollars per person in a shelter? That's ridiculous. You guys need to open the books on these nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers for the afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, the city council will meet in that room for closed session. I know the chamber's already filling up for the five-thirty meeting, the very special meeting presentations. I think we'll probably be about five-forty, is what I think. I'm sorry, we're going to do the best that we can. All right? We are adjourned.